Okay, welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, July 8. We have all Select Board members in attendance. And tonight, let me just run through the agenda. We'll start with community input, then we'll move on to appointments and resignations, followed by culvert evaluation presentation at 7:15, followed by financial transfers, then a discussion on open special. We're going to open the special town meeting and have a brief discussion on that, followed by the town administrator bylaw implementation. We'll briefly discuss Select Board FY '26 goals preparation, town scholarship fund priorities and procedures discussion at 9:05, 9:20 administrator report, then warrants and minutes approval, liaison reports, cemetery deeds, and again, end with community input. So with that, I will open it up to community input. First, I'll ask if anyone in the room has any input. Seeing none, we'll look online. Does anyone have any community input?
Reporters don't count. Rallay count.
Seeing none, let's move on to appointments and resignations. So we have one appointment for Royce Taylor to the position of traffic safety officer for the police department. Ryan, is there anything specifically we need to know about this one?
Nope, just that he decided that he didn't want to do this and then changed his mind and withdrew.
Okay.
Okay. I move to appoint Royce Taylor to the position of traffic safety officer for the police department.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And with that, we are ahead of schedule.
Keep going.
Is the engineering here?
I think that guy's in the culverts, maybe?
I would give him a couple minutes. They are one representative this year.
Why don't we do transfers or something?
We're going to need Kelly for that one. So why don't we bump down to warrant and minutes approval? If people had a chance to read the minutes.
I did, and I had some corrections.
Some corrections, okay. Who was recording the corrections?
Under the, let's see here, it records that Christine Lear abstained. It should be Christine Stevens.
Sure.
And, yeah, that was my only correction on the minutes.
That is a substantive correction, though. So can we have?
All right, so, yeah, should we just, we can take a motion to approve them if nobody else has any other correction, we could just say as amended tonight.
Yeah, we would say motion to approve as amended, and Gretchen would make that change and add it to the meeting minutes.
Works.
Any further discussion on the minutes from June 10? Can someone make a motion to approve as amended?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the June, what was it, June 10 minutes, as presented in the packet tonight with the amendment to change the name Christine Lear to Christine Stevens.
Not change the name, just second and place.
Replace the name. There you go.
Not legally changing. Not legally changing the names. You are now known as Christine Lear.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. So that is done. Can we do cemetery deeds?
Sure.
Sure.
Let's do them.
So cemetery deeds, we have, I feel like we've been working too hard on the assessment committee, but.
All right. Just as a, also had a correction there. The town of Carlisle is misspelled.
On which deed?
The Sorrows. Do you see how it's C-A-R-L-I-L?
Carlisle. It's odd.
Yeah. You'd think if there's one word, we'd get right.
You'd think it'd be a template. Maybe we've been getting it wrong all these years.
Yeah.
It's on the actual deed?
It is.
Not on the motion?
No. So this is administrative note to fix it on the deed.
Yes.
So can we, can we still approve it? Or do we need to redo the deed?
That's not gonna.
Yeah, we just sign it once we get it.
We don't sign it tonight, right? We wait and get the corrected version.
Yep.
So I move to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery described deed 846-lot D-392, graves two and three, to Brian and Molly Sorrows, 96 Litchfield Road, with the note that the actual deed should make the spelling correction in the name of Carlisle.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we will, I guess, get that reprinted and re-signed. I don't know, that's probably not, we'll have to add that to the next agenda, then. Which is on the 20 seconds. Okay, moving along.
Well, and what time were we going to do? At 7:15?
7:15.
I mean, we could take a quick look at the liaison assignments.
Yeah, let me pass that out. Anyone can take, and I can just run you through. I received comments from everyone. I did my best to reflect those comments in the assignments. There's a few we will talk about, just because I wanted to, there's one, you guys are not in contention, but a couple, there's one that.
Sorry.
What's up?
I love it. Color coded.
So let me just run through the main changes. So for Barney, this has Barney taking on ConsCom and LSC, maybe AdCom, we're going to talk about that just briefly. You're giving up police renovation, so you're a net add, but had volunteered to do that. David, your changes are taking on the Affordable Housing Trust, which you volunteered to do, keeping planning board, which is going to be a heavy lift, giving up Center Park, and then in this version, I have, and we can talk about it, Travis picking up police. Travis, I think you had noted you might be open to that. I thought that would be a good shift for the year, if you're amenable to that.
Sure.
Travis, I have you taking on police, the police renovation. I was curious if you might want to take on historical commission in the demo bylaw. I currently have that.
It's a bigger lift, and, you know, with the MFC and these other liaisons, so if I did that, I'd want to maybe swap around something else.
Let's talk about that, because I can keep it. Maybe, I thought we should just have, and it's probably part of the MFC, but have actual, like liaisons for like the DPW projects, just in terms of.
I'm happy to do that, because I'm already doing it at the MFC.
And then you and Barney had both volunteered for AdCom. Travis currently has it. Barney, you're taking on ConsCom and LSC, so I don't know if that makes sense to move over to Barney, or if it's better to keep it with Travis. You guys have any thoughts on that?
I sort of, you know, I thought just because of the issues that come up, but.
I think it's better if you do it than, because it dovetails in with the other.
Yeah, Stuart, that's fine.
Okay.
So what's, Ag is?
Arnold.
So Ag will be Arnold. I'm taking on FinCom, potentially giving up historical to somebody, giving up scholarship. I talked to Christine about taking on the challenge of getting our, which we'll talk about tonight, our scholarship advisory committee and processes up and running.
Is it an actual committee that we're rejuvenating, or it's we're creating a new one?
We would be creating a new one, is my understanding.
Yeah.
That whole, the whole thing essentially needs to be put into place. And Christine was willing to take that on. And, question, okay, so I can keep historical. Then Travis, would you keep fire? And I would stay on as the fire station liaison.
Fire, you mean just the chief?
You would.
Well, give them the whole thing, and give them dispatch, too. Why not, right?
Okay.
No, I mean, well, the contracts are done. There's nothing to do.
It's fine, it's fine. Yeah, I'll do that.
So Travis, you'll do fire, police, dispatch.
Yep.
I'll retain demo bylaw.
Which is the historic.
Historic.
Yes, historic.
Historic is the, this, until we get to fall town meeting, I think is kind of busy with them, otherwise.
Well, you know, today I want to talk about how many articles we are actually going to agree to accept.
Okay.
But, so that may fall off.
Christine is taking up a number of Kate's assignments. She's agreed, and we've discussed this, and Christine chime in, taking on Board of Health, which I think will be a good fit, taking on the scholarship. I think between Board of Health and scholarship, that's kind of the meat of the assignments. Recreation and youth, we had the question of, is youth related to recreation, or they completely separate? But they're not, they're not heavy.
Completely separate.
Okay.
No, it's a very well-run committee, and, yeah, it's, leadership, so.
Safety, Center Park, and then magic map, I'm not sure how to pronounce that.
We'll call it MAPS-E.
MAPS-E. So that's what's reflected on, there's a few edits that I have, but that's essentially what's reflected on the sheets with the edits of Travis, Snell would be communication dispatch, Arnold would be AdCom, I would retain historical, and I think those are the only edits.
Yeah.
The other thought I had is that, in this year in particular, maybe somewhere in the winter or early spring, we review these in light of post-fall town meeting and upcoming transitions on the Select Board, so maybe we look at transitioning a couple of the key ones, just for continuity, as we move into the summer. And I think the workload is going to shift relatively dramatically on a few of these.
After town meeting?
After town meeting. We might have some new priorities, too, coming out of that, so.
Right.
We'll just keep an eye on that, but hopefully this works for everyone.
Yeah.
So I have a question. If you're an appointed representative, do you need to be sworn in, even though you're already sworn in?
Yes. Oh, if you're a member, if you're a member.
Well, you don't need a liaison, you don't need to be. If it's as appointed representative.
Yes.
That's really me, affordable housing. Do I have to get re, even though I'm already?
Yes. Ashley's really, she's on it.
All right, so I have to get sworn in.
Do we need to vote on these, or is this just a?
Not really, I mean, we can, they look good to me, but.
I don't think it takes a vote, right?
Doesn't take a vote.
What was the other thing on those?
Oh, the other one is the LAPC. That's, I just see your note down here, and maybe that's a conversation.
Well, there's a couple.
With Ryan, or?
Yeah, the LAPC, and then there were a couple on there, like the River.
Stewardship committee. I said I would take it on, but then honestly, nobody here had done it before, so, I, nobody's reached out. I don't know what that is exactly. I should have pursued it more, but I didn't, so, I mean, I can see what that's about.
I think that there's, yeah, do we, you might want to look at that committee. Is it an active committee?
Well, it's not a Carlisle committee, no, it's a, it's a, it's a regional, I think the River is the, I think it's a regional thing, so it includes Concord, Sudbury River, I'm not sure what else, but it's a, yeah, so it's kind of a regional group. I will do better this year, and I'll find out, see if I can find out who the contact person is.
Don't come knocking, we don't need to.
They haven't, nobody's come knocking, so.
I don't even know what it is, to be quite honest. And I don't know if there's anything else on here that, I know there were a comment about the audit committee from last year, does it need to be reconstituted? David, I don't know if.
Which one, I'm sorry?
The audit committee.
You know, we weren't allowed, I mean, we're allowed, we're allowed to have an audit committee, but if we nominate it as a committee, then it's subject to OML, which is okay, but we thought, I think, Ryan, that we would just review their, I would just review the audit report, just to flag things for our, there's really no need for a committee, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Right? Am I saying it correctly?
So I put together a working group every year to pre-review the audit?
Yeah.
And then it's presented to the Select Board.
Right, so I can go in and scrub it, or ask a bunch of questions, and.
So if I found my working group had an issue, then we would put together a committee to address it?
Right.
Or if it was presented to you and you wanted to establish a committee, that could be a way to go.
Now, there are some whose opinions I do respect, who feel like we would be abrogating as a, our fiscal fiduciary duty not to have an audit committee, a formal audit committee, because it's ceding too much authority to the TH, so, I mean, I'm open to that, but then you have, when we have to form a real committee, it's not just me going to visit.
Well, you can remain the liaison to that.
I'm happy the way it is right now.
But if it's, you know, if that's something.
Well, it's a governance issue that you could take up some other time.
Okay.
It's not, I'm not, you know, it's not a big deal for me, I don't, I think it's fine.
Okay.
There's only somebody is, I think a Select Board person should be engaged in the process.
I think that's a good idea, that is going forward in general.
I've done enough audits in my life that I know how to do it, so, you know, I'm happy to do it. In a world where maybe there's not a financially knowledgeable Select Board person, maybe I'll do it differently.
Okay.
Right now, although most of us are pretty financially knowledgeable.
We have our culvert.
Yeah, folks.
So let's, yeah, let's move on to that. So I will update this, send it around, and I'll get it to Gretchen, and if she could get that on the website for everyone. And then if everyone, at some point in the not-too-distant future, can just reach out and let people know that you are either remaining the liaison or you're the new liaison, that would be great. And if you need a contact, want to contact, just let Gretchen know, or check the website. I think they're all pretty current.
And if you're taking over a committee that somebody else had last year, and you want to check in with them to kind of just see, you know, how things were left, or if there are any concerns, or whatever, I think that's a good idea, too.
Great.
I would also suggest we have Gretchen, you know, however she wants to send out the information, I know she posts it on the website, but at the same time, send it out to the chairs of all the committees, if that's okay.
Yep.
Yeah, she should do, right.
TA and the chair, right. And I know what we talked about last year was, the expectation would be that each liaison would at least make contact with the chair early on, and then if it's a committee that's, you know, has some significant responsibility, to make an effort to go to at least one of the early meetings, and then continue as needed in terms of being there personally. And I think that makes them feel like they know who to contact, too, if they have any concerns.
Makes sense, yep, good practice.
All right, very good. Let's move on to the much anticipated and awaited culvert evaluation presentation.
Yeah.
All right, so we have Matthew here from our civil engineering firm, Nitch. He's going to walk you through the state of your culverts.
Evening, just a quick check, can you all hear me?
Barely.
Just give it a second, we should be able to increase the volume.
If I need to, I can switch. Wow. Give me one sec, and I'll just switch my headphones. We can hear you now. How's that? Is that any better?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Excellent. All right, evening, everyone. I can, am I able to share my speaking? Oh, yeah, there we go. So.
Wait, no, he's machine.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'm Matthew Stegiewitz, I'm a structural engineer and project manager with Nitch Engineering. Recently, Nitch was engaged to do a culvert assessment and investigation of all, boy, it was quite a few culverts in the town of Carlisle, excuse me. So I'm just going to give a quick overview of what we, what we came up with and what we prepared for you. So I'm going to try and be, I know time is short, so I'll try to be as brief as possible and leave time for questions at the end here. We can skip the presentation summary and just get right into it. So a brief history, Nitch Engineering, we prepared a pavement management plan last year in March of 2024, where basically we did an assessment of all the roads in Carlisle and prepared a management plan of how to best maintain and where to, you know, budget funds in order to maintain them properly. Following that, in May of 2024, the Westford Street culvert failed, a large hole appeared in the roadway and was covered up with a plate. Nitch designed and permitted an emergency culvert replacement in June, a month later. And then following that emergency replacement, we were hired to perform something similar to what we did for the roadways, but for the culverts. So basically, we inspected, we spent three weeks inspecting every culvert in the town of Carlisle, preparing a GIS database of all the information we collected, and then preparing a management plan to provide recommendations and budget analysis of how to approach repairs and maintenance over the next 10 to 15 years. So the culvert assessment included, it was 157 culverts throughout the town. Ultimately, what we prepared, the deliverables, were an inventory, a culvert inventory, which is in the town GIS system, so anyone with, you know, municipal employees with access to the town GIS will be able to see the locations and all of the data we collected about each of the culverts, including the characteristics and the ratings that we gave to each of the culverts. And then we took all of that information we collected in the GIS and prepared an assessment report. Basically, it highlighted any high-risk structures, anything that was, you know, potentially going to replicate what happened on the Westford Road culvert. We also recommended maintenance or repairs for everything else. We prepared a capital investment analysis to give you an idea of how much, you know, repairs and maintenance would cost over the next decade or so, and then provided grant recommendations of how we, you know, the town could be assisted with funds to perform some of those repairs and maintenance. So again, the goal is really were to identify public safety concerns, is there anything else that would cause disruptions or, you know, public safety issues throughout the town, and to provide the town a tool to prioritize plan and budget for replacements and maintenance. This was sort of the existing condition, there were 140 culverts at the time in the town's GIS system, but really, all there was, was a data point giving the location and not very much other information about it. We located 157 culverts, so we added 17 culverts to the town GIS. We also used high-res GPS location to locate the inlet and outlet of each of the culverts, so now you have a good idea of where the inlet and outlet are located. And in addition to that, we supplemented all that GIS data, the location data, with many, many other data points. This is just a small summary of the sort of tablet interface that we use to collect all this, but up to, I think it was 40 or 50 data points, including the type of culvert, the shape, the length, the width, the height, the depth beneath the roadway, and then all the condition assessments that we collected, including the, you know, the headwalls, the embankments, the pipe themselves, how much flow was going through them, whether or not they were obstructed, and any other concerns or things that were noted about, you know, environmental issues, or traffic safety issues, or, you know, disruption, if a culvert did fail, what type of disruption it would cause. So all of that will be in the GIS system that, you know, you should have access to. We rated all the culverts on a bunch of structural criteria, so this is just a small snippet of the very thorough report, but this was to kind of give you an idea of, you know, what we rated the culverts on, you know, from a good condition down to a failing condition, and gives the criteria on which those were rated. Again, we looked at the pipes themselves, the headwalls, the embankments, we gave all of those ratings. These are just a couple of quick examples of some of the pipes and culverts in these conditions. So this is typically a good culvert. Again, the embankment, this is a very nice embankment, stable, you know, not eroding, a good pipe, you know, no section loss, no corrosion, and, you know, good headwall is fairly new, so. A lot of these throughout the town, which was nice. And then just sort of, it shows the progression through satisfactory, fair, this is where you begin to see cracking, and a lot of vegetation and overgrowth along the embankments, which can often lead to some of the erosion problems. You see just small deterioration culverts. And then you sort of get into the issues with poor culverts, and then finally, sort of the worst case, the failing culverts with broken headwalls and really very heavily corroded pipes and separations like that. So we took all that data, like I said, and we put it into the report. This is, again, just a small example of what we prepared in the report. So each of the, each of the, I believe it was 12 culverts that we identified as high-risk culverts. And I should preface that by saying that there were no culverts identified that are in imminent, you know, risk of failure. So there's nothing to the extent of the Westford Street culvert that is, you know, about, you know, was about to fail. We didn't, we didn't identify anything that needed to be immediately closed, so that is, you know, a good thing. But we did identify 12, what we called high-risk culverts. These are the most at risk for failure in the next five to 10 years. And this, again, is just an example of the information we provided for each of those 12 culverts. So we, you know, gave you a couple pictures to show the conditions, the location, we provided, you know, some of the data, the important data we collected, the culvert information, the road and stream information, that we, the risk categories that we provided, and then other concerns. But then, on the very left-hand side there, it's just a quick description of the existing conditions for each of the culverts that we identified. And then more, most importantly, most relevant to you, is the recommendation of what we would do to repair those culverts. So like I said, there were 12 high-risk culverts throughout the town. We worked with Ryan after we identified those 12 to really dig down and identify the four, basically, worst case of those 12, the four that we really needed to, you know, focus on, the ones that we would recommend be identified and repaired first. So those four are, three of them are on East Street, and one is on Toffett Road. Again, we kind of split it up, so those first four, we would recommend addressing in the next five years, and then the remaining eight could probably be pushed to the eight years beyond that, for, you know, six to 13 years. A quick overview of just the four primary culverts, we don't have to go too much into detail, but I just did want to give you a quick snapshot of what we're looking at here. This is a pretty large culvert on East Road, 42-inch diameter culvert. You can kind of see from the picture here, the heavy corrosion on the bottom of the culvert, the significant amount of erosion that's occurred beneath the culvert. It's basically 10 feet of this culvert is just kind of cantilevered past the outlet, hanging in space there. The headwall is broken, a lot of overgrowth and, you know, erosion on the slopes. Again, don't want to spend too much time on these, but just to give you an, this is the one on Toffett Road. Again, a lot of erosion on the embankments, which is leading to undermining the roadway. The culvert itself is failing, and when the culvert, you know, when there's, you know, holes in the culvert, it allows, you know, water to get out and fill to get in, and that's what causes, you know, sinkholes in the road and all their issues. And then these last two are, again, are just smaller culverts on East Street, both concrete, but I believe even, I believe the culverts in these themselves were not in terrible condition, so it really isn't even a full replacement that we would be recommending. It's more just a repair of these headwalls, a replacement of these headwalls, so that you don't, you know, lose these slopes, and then ultimately lose the roadway that is, you know, covering. that is, you know, covering, you know, above the headwalls here. And then, so beyond that, so that was the most important. Those high-risk culverts are going to be the priority, really, in our recommendations. But then beneath that, the less critical maintenance, this is sort of the low level here. It's just general culvert maintenance. So this is generally non-structural type maintenance. It's primarily just cleaning out the culverts. A lot of the culverts were obstructed. There were leaves and sticks and logs and brush in the culvert, which is, you know, constricting the flow area, which ends up causing flooding. And there were a couple neighbors that kind of stuck their heads out and asked what we were doing when we were out there. And they sort of mentioned that, you know, yards and roads had been flooded in the past due to, you know, some culverts here and there. So again, I think we estimated a yearly cost of cleaning the culverts, of jetting, jet blasting. So there are contractors that will come and shoot pressurized water through these culverts to get a lot of the sediment debris out of these culverts. We estimated the yearly cost of $51,000. Now, that cost is likely very inflated, simply because a lot of, we assumed that all of this work would be done by a contractor, whereas many towns in these municipalities have the equipment and personnel to do a lot of this equipment, maybe not the jet blasting, but a lot of the, you know, pulling sticks and logs out of the culverts. So again, it's really up to the town how much they're willing to do themselves. And the other thing is here, this may be, what we have seen may have been years and years and years of no cleanout. So just doing cleanup once may improve the condition of a lot of these culverts for years and years. So, you know, the amount of cleanup that needs to be done the following years is likely going to be significantly less.
Matt, can I just interrupt for just a second and ask you? And maybe it's really for our TA. Do we, does DPW currently do this, you know, from time to time? Or has it just been kind of fallen by the wayside?
Jim and I have talked about being more proactive in doing it.
Okay.
It's been mostly done recently as a reactive measure when issues are identified. But as Matt alluded to in the beginning, there are some culverts we didn't know existed. So this report allows us to know all of them and then like to create with Jim, based on this report, a multi-year approach to maintenance that can maintain these for longer. So we're not fixing everything all the time.
Sorry to interrupt, Matt. I just.
No, of course. That's what I'm here for. And yeah, I did, we did talk to Jim briefly out in the field and he did mention, you know, he was familiar with the jetting contractor and I believe they had done it, yeah, maybe. Maybe in the past as a reactionary measure, but yeah, it's pretty easy maintenance. And again, the more it's done, the better. It's going to be year to year. And then sort of there's this middle ground, these routine repairs and what we call non-critical maintenance. Again, this is not any, these are all culverts that are rated with a poor condition or worse. That doesn't necessarily mean that they are in imminent risk of failure. These repairs are not going to prevent failure, but they will prevent, you know, the deterioration of the culverts in the next 10, 15 years that, you know, may lead to failure down the road. So again, this is just sort of the routine maintenance to upkeep more structural than, you know, simple cleanout. This is stuff like patching spalls at the outlets of, or corrosion holes at the outlets and inlets of culverts, resetting and repointing stone headwalls. So these old stone headwalls that, you know, are just through time are sort of falling apart and falling down, resetting those, stabilizing embankments. So embankments that have eroded or, you know, maybe too steep or, you know, not enough vegetation in it to really keep it stabilized. Just doing a little maintenance work on those to prevent the washout of the embankments, which leads again to washout of the roadways. So, and then that includes an additional inspection in 10 years. So 10 years from now, a similar inspection to what we did where we would go through. And amortizing those costs, we put a, basically a sort of a, an estimated lump sum cost for, you know, the number of culverts we identified in poor condition and figured out the cost of roughly $118,000 a year if you were to do all of that work over 10 years.
I have to ask Matt.
Again, just to.
Per year.
Yep, go ahead.
Quick question, what is a spall?
That's where the concrete.
A spall would be on a concrete, let's see if I can, I don't know if there's any in. So a spall would be, maybe see it on one of these photos here, but it's basically a crack in concrete that has progressed to where that that crack has sort of fallen off of the main chunk of concrete. So you can, you can think of it as kind of a.
Sometimes a chunk will come out.
Yeah, basically losing a chunk of structural concrete.
Okay, thanks.
I wish I had known spall. I could have.
Yeah, it's structural jargon. But again, so the capital investment analysis here, this is sort of the breakdown that we came up with. Again, just to kind of reiterate what we've said before, $51,000 ongoing for clean-out maintenance is what we anticipate. Based on the number of culverts and the number that we saw, you know, that have sediment and obstructions within them, like I said before, depending on how much the town is willing to do themselves, this number is, you know, potentially much less. And, you know, the, you know, the more maintenance that's done, the less that cost goes, you know, year after year. Routine maintenance, like I said, non-critical culverts, but in poor condition over 10 years, roughly 100 to 118,000 a year, we wouldn't anticipate if you were to address everything. Oh, sorry. And then the big items, so the four prior, primary, high priority culverts that we identified. If you were to address all four of them in the next five years, we estimate that to be about 261,000 per year over the next five years. And then the remaining eight after that, just under $300,000. And again, these are all accounting, they're amortized, so all accounting for inflation over the next, you know, whatever this is, 13, 15 years.
Did you calculate per year?
That is per year.
It is per year.
So Matt, I mean, you wouldn't, like on those four, you would like do one a year, right? You wouldn't like do all of four, like over five years. You just do one, then do the next one, right? So each one's about maybe 300K or something like that.
And we did four over five years because, as Ryan could probably tell you with the Westford Street culvert, it is not, it's not a very quick process. The emergency repair can go quickly, but the sort of final design process is often tied up in permitting and design and looking at hydraulics and other things. So give it a year, give it a year to start design and then another year to construct.
Oh, I see.
And then maybe you start designing a second one while you're working on the third one. So yes, this would be, you know, four, five years to complete the, those four culverts, assuming, you know, it would be 261,000 per year over those five.
But basically, 261 times five, so 1.3 million over four, that's like 300 and something thousand per culvert, roughly, right? You're going to overlap the projects, but the project's probably about 300 grand, right? Roughly speaking.
Roughly speaking, that is, that's pretty much in line with what we've seen. So, yeah, culvert and bridge replacements have gotten pricey over the past couple of years. Mostly just because it isn't as simple as just, you know, throwing a corrugated pipe in the ground and covering it up anymore.
No, 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 he didn't say it right. It's, I want to make sure Travis understands. This is the annual spend.
It says anticipated yearly cost at the top of it.
So three quarters of a million dollars.
Yes.
So a question, Matt. When you guys did the pavement study, one of the things that, you know, jumped out at me was essentially you're modeling that spending money early saves money later, right? Like get on, you know, you had the grading system of the pavement and you really, if you wait too long, basically on a bad one, it costs you way more.
Yeah.
In this one, it seems like not as severe a thing, right? You've got some, a hand out of 157, you've got like 14 things that have to get addressed a lot. Okay, but then really the 100 and say 60 or 70,000, the top two lines, that kind of PM forever would keep those things in better shape. Is that a theory?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So if you did routine maintenance, you know, more regularly, you might not have 14 or whatever. We had 12, 12 of these culverts in, you know, the condition where we might, you know, where we identified them as high risk. A lot of, it is progressive failure and the more progressive it gets, the more expensive it does get to repair. Usually it starts with the headwalls and the embankments, and that leads to structural issues with the pipe itself. If you can get it so that, you know, you're maintaining the headwalls and embankments, then, you know, the pipe won't need as many, you know, won't need repairs as soon.
But it's also there's.
And it's much more expensive, you can imagine, to replace the entire, you know, pipe underneath the roadway than it is to replace, you know, the headwalls or, you know, maintain the headwalls. So I would say, yeah, I would agree with you. Maybe it isn't as, you know, critical as the roadways to get it early. But there is some, there is some benefit for sure to spending some money on maintenance to avoid. The other thing is, again, with the Westford culvert, it got to a point where it needed emergency, it needed emergency repair. So we spent money designing and constructing the emergency repair, but that isn't the final condition. So the permit, the, that allowed us to do the emergency repair basically required us to make sure that the emergency repair was adequate to current design standards and that, you know, it may require, you know, replacement with a more hydraulically adequate culvert. You know, so there is that, you know, that extra spending you have to spend if there's something like a failure that you don't necessarily need to do if you get to it before it fails.
That's not part of the 14, right? So that's, or 12 or whatever, that's like another million dollars that might be sitting out there someday. Right, because we.
So we're spending about, rough number, 60,000 to analyze the hydrology to make sure, if that comes back that it's fine, then we're done.
Right.
If it doesn't, then we have to spend money to design the mix and then fix it.
So Matt, again, like just for my edification, a culvert can, in your pictures it shows, it can be all the way from like a little bridge with like real poured concrete and a span to like some little pipe that just runs under a road with some rocks shoring it up, right? I mean, they're all culverts.
Yes, yeah. So in, again, structural jargon, a culvert is generally under a 10-foot span. And that's what we found in practice. There were not any spans larger than 10 feet.
But roadways, two-way roads are wider.
12-inch diameter pipes to.
So Westford Street's got to be wider, right? Any road, East Street is wider.
So it's span, not pipe.
Uh, sorry, yeah, span meaning the diameter of the pipe.
The other way, the linear way.
The headwall measurement.
I see. And these were put in typically when the roads were built? Like when were they put in? Like how old are they?
Well, I mean, looking at East Street, I'm guessing when that road was put in, that's when those culverts. So I bet that's 50 years, you know what I mean? I'm thinking that.
Typically, the barrel, as you call it, it's like, is mild steel or?
Corrugated.
It can vary. There were a bunch of corrugated steel. The ones on East Street were both reinforced concrete pipe and the other one was a corrugated steel pipe. There were also some other, like plastic, corrugated plastic pipes. And I believe there were some arches as well, like open bottom arches. But yeah, it was, it was a variety of different types.
So if it's, if it's longer than a 10-foot span, you call it a bridge?
Correct, a small bridge. 10 to 20 feet is a small bridge and, yeah, 20 feet is just a bridge.
We haven't looked at those yet, other than the big one over like a river.
We did address one. I wouldn't say we have a big problem there.
We have some bridges, though.
Yes.
And what about if it's smaller? Is there anything below a culvert?
Nope, nope, culvert is, yeah, anything from like an 8-inch, 12-inch pipe.
Matthew, when you, when you talk about the culvert, so we talk about cleaning the brush out, you know, obviously within it, but then how far does your analysis go outside of it? Because doesn't a culvert then dump into like a drainage swale? And does that need to be cleaned out as well?
So if we identify, yeah, we did. And that was part of what we looked at when we, we looked at it. So there were environmental risks, I guess, environmental risks that we identified at each culvert. So if there were, if the, the channel was undersized or if it was overgrown and, or eroded, so if the culvert was, you know, sticking up above and like there was an outfall down into the channel. So we did identify, identify that. I would say it was limited maybe, you know, the first 10 or 15 feet on either side of the culvert. We didn't go, you know, 500, 600 feet down channel. But if we did stand anything, yeah, if it was in sort of the line of sight of the culvert, we did, we did put that information in the GIS system and did use that in our ranking of like environmental risks and safety risks.
You clean the culvert, but then it can't go anywhere, so it's just accidental.
So is dredging?
So you also looked at, so obviously funding is a big issue that we need to.
Right.
There's not, I don't know there's any debate on if this need, this work needs to be done, right? So really for the town, it's how do we plan and bake this into our capital plans and all the other projects we have going on?
Yeah, so I mean, right.
And there's some potential grant assistance that I would assume we need to start.
Before we pivot to the grants, I know we're getting close to time. The, I don't know what's it, I had that thought and you told me.
We can go a few extra minutes on this, just given the financial transfers.
Isn't the safety committee in charge of like roads and sidewalks? Maybe we take this on as a, write some grants? No.
I don't.
I mean, in terms of the grant writing.
Well, we'll write the grants. The question is, do we get them, right?
Ryan, who do you?
I think his head, right?
How do you, yeah.
In terms of town, who, how would these grants typically be managed? Because we've gotten grants for other projects.
That would be me.
Okay.
Great. I'm all in support of that.
Do you have the resource to pursue these grants?
Matt, I have a quick question for you. Since you also did, NICH also did the pavement analysis, is there, was there any sort of cross-referencing, particularly in a place? I guess we only have one where you're saying the full culvert has to be replaced, right? The one on Toffett Road? Right? Am I reading this correctly? And I was just curious whether there's any, I don't know, is there any benefit to looking at the pavement repairs and sort of coordinating?
Yeah, we did go back and cross-reference, not for everything, but for the, for a couple of the critical culverts, where like you said, there were a handful, I think there was one in the primary, the four primary culverts that we recommended full replacement.
Right.
And then a handful in the remaining eight. And those did, I think there were a few, I'd have to go back and look at my notes. I believe there were a few that lined up with the, some of the recommendations in the pavement management plan.
Yeah, I guess.
I would, I would, before you went and did any pavement work, I would certainly, you know, reference what, what culverts you were doing first so that you weren't, you know, paving a road and then the next year, within a few years.
Wasting the money, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just going to rip it up and pave it again. The other thing, the other thing is, yeah, the culverts are pretty small, like roadways are long infrastructure, you know, hundreds of feet, miles, where the culverts typically only take up 10 or 15 feet. So there is some benefit, but it's, it's not the end of the world if you pave a road and then a couple of years later have to patch a, you know, a strip of it because of the culvert.
Did you, Matt, did you identify any culverts where the barrel has collapsed under the roadway?
Uh, no, no. So there were, we didn't, we couldn't crawl into every culvert. So I guess we didn't have full eyes on, but we are trained in, you know, we've seen enough collapses and enough repairs in the past to kind of identify the signs from the surface of, you know, that. And we did not identify any of that. We didn't see anything that there might have been a collapse of a culvert that we, you hadn't seen. And typically, they are pretty, you know, catastrophic. They, you end up with a pretty big hole in the road if that does happen.
We have a few minutes left on this. So in terms of the reports, and I would, I would tell anyone watching this, this is just town culverts. There's probably plenty of culverts. I know we have them in our neighborhood, it's private street. So this is just the town land, town road. This is just the town land, town road culverts. Private roads are not included in this study, they're not included. Well, maybe they are in the GIS, but this is not part of that study.
This is ours.
Yeah, yeah, just sometimes people are confused about what's ours and what's theirs. So Ryan, what, what do you need from us tonight or in the near future? So is it really a planning issue of-
You would be doing future use of service to start including this in the capital plan. And just like the road plan, there's no way to fully, and I think Matt would agree, there's no way to fully fund this recommendation within current resources. The main reason for advocating for chapter ninety in infrastructure dollars, including grant dollars, is because every town faces this, but small towns in particular. Carlisle has done a good job investing in current day services, but long-term infrastructure is, is quote-unquote killing you, right? Between buildings and, and road maintenance and culvert maintenance. So identifying the full scope of the problem, coordinating repairs to make it efficient, and then deciding what level of risk you're willing to accept that this maintenance should be part of your capital planning.
Right. And I sent this to FinCom, and I think they're gonna discuss this a little bit on Thursday at their next meeting. So getting it on their radar. And then you're working with Jim. And as soon, I don't know when we can get a better indication of some of these potential alternate grant assistant recommendations, if that's a process, using whatever means we can to get that in motion would be helpful, to find out what's viable, what's not. Is there extra money? Does this just have to come out of our chapter ninety funds?
So to answer that a bit, in, in the report, I, I saw, I believe I should be sharing the report now, we did provide nine, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, nine, uh, grant programs, um, in this chart here. Basically, uh, ranking them from high alignment to low alignment with the town's needs and your likelihood to, to secure those funds. Uh, with a, with some notes here on, you know, the available money, you know, how you would go about it, what it kind of looks for in terms of the grant. So, um, uh, you know, if you dig into that report, you should have some, um, opportunity here. We did, we did include, so just the, the, the strap grants are the highest alignment. That's the small-town road improvement within Mass Works program. These are, you know, ideal funds for these types of projects. The MVP program is highly aligned, uh, the culvert assistant, uh, replacement assistant from DER. Uh, however, that's more of an incentive to upgrade culverts than it is to replace them. So you have to be careful with those because they can often end up costing you more money, uh, because you have to upgrade it.
It turns culverts into-
We did include chapter ninety funding, that, you know, the thing there is if you've already sort of drawn from that, um, you know.
And these dates are all over the map in terms of due dates, so-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we don't want to miss, it seems like these upcoming dates, spring, June, we want to be-
We should talk about the strap, right? Because that's the most, like, in your experience, Matt, like, would a town like us get one such grant? Like one, fix one culprit?
Uh, so, uh, let's see, um, honestly, I haven't, we haven't done a tremendous amount of those small-town grants. But I believe, I, I don't, I think there's an upper limit, um, per year. I want to say it's, it's one million dollars per year.
It is a million, Matt.
And the grants themselves are between fifty and five hundred thousand dollars a year. So I, I don't believe it is restricted to what you've had in the past. Um, I think it's based on a yearly limit. Um, so anything, anything that you apply and is, um,
That seems like the best one.
May, maybe, um-
Yeah, that, that to me seems the best course, right? We should say-
The top two, the strap and the MVP, are the most likely for us to get. Um, as, as discussed earlier, the other ones would probably tie our hands in some way that we wouldn't want to be tied. So the, the problem with the strap grant and the MVP grant is you had a presentation about MVP and the various things the town wants to address, and this competes directly with other priorities in town. And then you had a very robust meeting about walkability in town, and we have been trying to put together the potential for a strap grant in order to address some of those concerns as well.
Walkability is nice to have, and culverts are must-haves, right?
So that's what I would say, but you had, you know, fifty to a hundred people who wanted, who wanted to walk-
I mean, this is a great segue. In my mind, this is a classic thing for tomorrow. I mean, this is a true, that, exactly that issue.
It's a priority.
That issue, you know, I know I didn't give you back goals, but because it was difficult for me. Because that is really the issue. Like, can we afford the nice-to-haves? We think of ourselves in this idyllic way. But, you know, when you get back down to it, people want their roads, they want them plowed, they don't want them to collapse. They want to make sure the fire department gets, you know, those are the things you gotta have. And I, I really feel like there's so much of that, you know, when we think about the DPW building on top of the fire station. Like, there's so much of that immediate need, I feel like that's like gotta be how we sort of-
Let's discuss that tomorrow and-
So this is great input for that, right? Because this is somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, three or four million bucks, right, to kind of put to bed the-
And you're leading the charge on grants and working with Jim and all that stuff, and so-
But what we need is policy direction.
Yeah.
So we can write whatever grant, and I do think will be successful. But we need to, what we run into is there's two or three different grants coming at us to write for that April MVP grant.
Okay.
So your time would best be spent directing safety committee and other committees to make their case and then decide which one we're going for, because we would likely get one strap grant every three to five years.
One, okay, not even one a year, one every three to five.
Oh, yeah.
Because you said a million dollars a town, but there's only, it's under five hundred thousand a grant.
Yeah. Having competed for strap grants before, I can tell you, a town without economic development and housing is not very competitive for the state's biggest awards.
So one of the must-fixes might get paid for by the strap.
Okay. So we'll, I mean, we'll just build that into the, either our goals and/or our agendas based on the timing and when people are raising the possibility of going for a strap grant, and then we'll give you that direction.
I mean, can you still move money around in June, July, I guess?
And everyone's got a different date. Um, is there anything else we need to cover off with Matt tonight? Yes, thank you for the report. Thank you for the, the presentation.
Absolutely, no. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for-
And are you, are you done on your end with this project for now, or is there still any work remaining?
No, this was the, this was the, the final scope item in this. You have all the, the deliverables and, we are always available for, if you have any questions on the report, please don't hesitate to give us a call. We're happy to answer any questions or give any advice in the future, so.
We are not gonna, presumably, we're not gonna start PMing culverts or repairing culverts until fiscal twenty-seven, right? We gotta authorize this stuff in the springtime, unless there's an emergency.
We've been building your road maintenance and infrastructure plan. We started with one years of roads, then two years. We'd like it to be five and-
But I mean, could we redirect some paving money or something else if we felt we needed to prioritize?
That's what we want to discuss with you during, during the budget planning process as well.
No, but budget planning, I get that. Budget planning is fiscal twenty-seven stuff, right? Like, the FinCom's gonna look at it and then the fall and da-da-da, and then in the spring is when we will budget that for the following, you know, a year from today. So that's my question, is there any, if we decided that some, sub-part of culverts has more urgency than some of these road paving things that were, can we move the money around or not?
Yeah, and we're gonna be talking about road maintenance in, we have the hearing in August, and then we'll have a road maintenance discussion after that in September?
Yes, which should inform the capital plan.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
And my last pitch, constantly telling you to advocate for chapter ninety. Chapter ninety is the most direct route for funding for small towns about this stuff. And the more small towns that get on board saying, this is much more helpful than-
I mean, politically advocating for more.
Because if you could, if you could get some of this off your plate without increasing taxes, then you can afford to build projects and other things. But when you have to squeeze these projects in through borrowing and other, and other financial mechanisms that directly increase the tax base, you can't get big projects done like fire stations. So the town could greatly help you solve the big generational problems by helping you do the preventative maintenance and the other necessary capital. Federal government was trending in that direction. We're hoping that they're still gonna commit to these infrastructure dollars, but there is money there to, that the state should be tapping into.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you, Matt, we appreciate it.
Yeah, bye, good night, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it, have a good night.
And moving on, we have, uh, financial transfer, and Kelly is on the line. FinCom is not meeting tonight, they did not post a meeting, they are meeting Thursday to do their part of it. But, um, I know James at least has reviewed the transfer, and Kelly's here to just walk us through what's being requested.
Good evening, everyone. Back again. Just a, a small transfer, kind of a final cleanup transfer this evening. Undercut the insurance just slightly with my last request, so I'm asking for an additional spread of five thousand dollars to help cover that difference.
Right, and did you have the, there was just a little-
I'll call it up.
I do, I don't know if I can-
I think Ryan has, he's gonna bring it up.
This little, this little memo here.
Description?
Vote to approve.
Well, we have the motion.
But while we're doing that, Kelly, so COHS is gonna take a little haircut. What, is that unspent money or what is that?
Yes, yep, they had, um, they had a pretty comfortable turnback for FY twenty-five.
Turnback as in they didn't spend it or?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay.
Do you want to proceed with the motion?
Sure.
I move that the select board vote pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-three B, to approve year-end transfers between various line items of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget as detailed in the memo from the town accountant dated July eighth, twenty-twenty-five. And there, that's the memo up on the board, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Up on the screen.
Second.
Discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, okay. Um, and then FinCom will review and presumably approve on Thursday.
Correct. So following that meeting and that vote, I'll, I can send a document if everything's approved for you, Scott, to sign as chair.
And do you think that's the end of the transfers, or are you expecting anymore?
That's the end.
I guess we're, we're right out of time.
We're about out of time.
This is when we usually do most of them, or we used to do most of them around this time, so. Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kelly. A quick note on the COHS, so there's no drop in service. Jeff, Jeff, our new director, is, is working pretty closely with me, Kelly, Aubrey, and the COHS board directly to tie services to budget. We're trying to find ways to limit the increase while increasing the services, which sounds funny, but that's part of our previous discussions about revolving funds and goals and all of these things. So we expect to give you a pretty, a pretty good presentation on that. I just wanted to allay any fears, since we're taking money from the COHS, that we're, we're not cutting services to seniors. In fact, it's the opposite. I would say they've increased from last year.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So with that, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is to open the special town meeting warrant. Discuss the special town meeting schedule and then some other, uh, potential topics related to that. So we should probably just start with the motion, correct, procedurally, to get that open?
Yep.
I move to open the warrant of the special town meeting currently scheduled for November second, twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-five.
I mean, twenty-twenty-five, yeah. Twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay. Any discussion? Do a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
So the currently scheduled language is to allow for a potential change if something comes up where we think we need to move the date? Is that why it's written that way? As currently scheduled?
Yes.
It's not anticipating a change, it gives you that room.
But there are, there is a, the potential discussion of if you split the, split it into two nights, make an adjustment in that way.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else we need to do? That's done with the opening the warrant, right? And then we wanted to talk about some other topics related to that. The special town meeting schedule, what do we need to address there?
Okay, you got it. So this is, this is tentative, but this is why everything is compressed, to give you a visual. We'd like to close the warrant by September, which means people have another, you know, less than two months to go before, or about two months before they can submit anything. And then you would have two weeks after that to, to sign the warrant, get the warrant out. And then the motions booklet would be due two weeks after that. So once you have all the warrants, you have about a month to approve them. Which is why we're trying to get people in front of you now, because the timeline is compressed in the backend.
Right. Is this something that we have, Brian, the, the schedule there or no?
No, this is our internal schedule, that's in the select board calendar.
Okay, great.
And you don't need a, you just want verbal support for that? You don't need approval for any, any of these specific-
No, and, and these dates are yours, so they can change. You might want to close the warrant earlier.
Yeah, there's no, right, I mean, I, I would suggest we do that.
I would also say that we know of four articles, but we don't know what, what isn't, what hasn't been submitted yet.
Right.
I mean, but that's two things to note. One is if you tighten the window, you, you'll get fewer articles. Two, it is entirely the select board's discretion as to what articles they take up, which is what I would-
Correct.
If the chair would allow me some time, I'd like to talk about that.
So a couple of small items that were scrubbed from the annual town meeting include some bylaw cleanup, it's just language, probably consent agenda type items, and then a solicitor canvassing bylaw that the police wanted to do. I'm guessing that the warrant total will be closer to ten than four by the time you close the warrant, unless you close it soon.
Which ones are we anticipating? MBTA, wetlands, this police one?
Fire station.
The police isn't in there yet. So the, the wetland bylaw, the, the MBTA, the demo delay bylaw, and the fire station.
Right. And then you had mentioned some cleanup.
Solicitor may not be a fast article either, so, I mean, cleanup will be fast, but solicitor might-
And are we gonna have any personnel policy changes that require bylaw changes?
Not that you would need to do in the fall. So the personnel policies are your policy.
Right.
The impacts on the bylaw would be minimal and would just be name changes and other items.
Okay.
So David had asked if he could speak to a couple of other issues, and we do have time this evening, because everything basically from this point beyond is select board, and we've covered off some of the later agenda items. So, um, do you, do you want to introduce some of the topics you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, yeah, I do, thank you. So, um, Tom, in the last time, I think it was the last time or the time before, we, we, the town meeting study committee provided, um, a sort of summary of its analysis of what worked, what didn't work. The, the largest single, there were two major takeaways, I would say, from our town meeting efforts. One was that people generally did like Sunday, Sunday, they kind of liked that, starting earlier and having more time and, you know, not running late at night. But overwhelmingly, it was too long. Now, you know, I've certainly been critical of some things that were done, uh, and the town moderator has taken some of that criticism to heart in terms of driving a more streamlined process. We could have probably saved ourselves an hour. But regardless of that, we started at noon or one, and we went till after five, and people were like, I'm not doing that, right? So I want to start with the, the big picture and then go to the more small things. So the big picture, which, again, we can talk about tomorrow, is kind of philosophically what's our goal, right? So one of our goals, town meeting committee, is greater civic engagement. And to get greater civic engagement, we don't have to tap the fifty, sixty, seventy-year-olds that we see every year at town meeting. We gotta get it to twenty, thirty, forty-year-olds who have busy lives with younger kids and, you know, all this chess. They are not gonna put up with those long meetings, they are not interested in it. They think it's an antiquated process that's stupid because they grew up with, you know, ritual meetings. Like, they don't understand like why it's so high-down. Now, there's a lot of reasons why you can't just change those laws. But if you don't make it accessible, they won't come. That's it, they won't come. Maybe when they're retired, they'll start coming. So- So it's, it's important to me, at least personally, to continue that outreach. And part of that has to do with managing, as Brian said, Brian is a good, Brian Waterston's a good thoughtful representative of that demographic who actually does participate. He's like, why aren't we time-sticking? Why aren't we time-binding this? Like, why isn't it bound by a certain amount of time? It's three hours, four hours, you're done. Like, that's it. So that's like something we really have to consider. And particularly in this town meeting, because we have beyond, and I didn't even consider those other things you mentioned, Ryan, but there are four potentially lengthy debate issues. MBTA is certainly going to go because we're on a clock and we have to get that thing done. That could be between a two and a three-hour time block. Now, I personally believe, I'll just give my personal opinion, that Wayne could be way more aggressive at limiting debate. But he has absolutely no interest in doing that. He believes that this, and legitimately, okay, it's, I'm just giving my opinion and what I perceive as his opinion. I wouldn't say he has no interest, but he firmly believes that it's the length and complexity of the debate that makes for a rich town meeting, and that's an important issue. And certainly is evidenced by the open houses. I mean, there's lots of stuff going on, right? So maybe there'll be some time binding of that, but not a ton of it, right? And they are, we are planning for up to 1,000 people for that particular segment. Like the cafeteria, the gym, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on, right? So I think we have to start mentally with, like, between, again, tighten up the preamble. We're going to start immediately as there's a quorum. We'll do all those like little housekeeping things we can do. But it still could be up to three hours of the first issue, like the issue, which gets to the next thing. The next most, in my mind, the next most urgent thing, if it's ready, is the fire station. Because we want to be on the clock on that. And a question for you, Scott, and the others is, I think we talked about, it would be disingenuous to present the fire station without mentioning the magnitude of the DPW.
Right.
Yes.
So the first, the question I have to ask of you is, do you feel we'll be, or you and Ryan, do you feel you'll be ready? And I guess you too. Will, will you be ready for a presentation? Will we be ready for, to take that issue up in the fall?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So that's the next issue, right? That's at least an hour, in my opinion. I mean, it's possible that, yeah, great, but, you know, it's, it's a big ask. So, so now we get to kind of the sweet spot of like four hours. And maybe, you know, we're cramming in some bylaw cleanup and solicitor. But what we haven't done yet are two things which are in nobody's radar screen, which is the historical demo, I mean, it's on, if I judge by City on the Woods, it's on some people's radar screen, but they're not nearly as amped up now as the MBTAers are, right? And the conservation one, which is on nobody's, and as soon as they look at those maps and go, ah! That's going to be a huge issue. So.
That's the conservation issue?
The wetland bylaw.
I was in last time.
So, so the.
I got all excited about it.
Yeah. So the, the, the two, the two alternatives I, I would like to present for us, so we don't decide tonight, but I'd like us to present two models, and I want us to line up behind one of the two. Model one says it's 12 to 4, or it's 1 to 5, and we are taking up these four articles, right? The two cleanup articles, MBTA and fire station. That's all we're taking. And you guys, you wait till later on this other stuff. I mean, yes, people will, oh, we got to have it, but actually, it's not, in my mind, and then people can yell at me in the paper if they read all this, but I do not feel like there's an urgency behind those other two, which could have been done anytime in the last 30 years. Other towns have done it, and suddenly we have to do it this time. So one model says we're capping the issues and we're going to have a one-day meeting. And you know what? We're going to drive hard to try to get done by, you know, T plus four hours, right? The other model says, no, that's not right. We got all these things. We really have to address them. It's not fair to push them off. We're going to have a whole nother bunch of things in the spring, so we can't just keep kicking the can down. Those are fair. So we say instead, we're taking up these issues on Sunday, and we're going to stop, you know, after those issues. I mean, unless somehow we magically get done quickly, but, you know, and, and Wayne is definitely behind this, and he does it himself during the other town meetings. Let's say it's 12 to 4. At 3:30, we do not take up another ginormous issue. The other, like, that's it. Like, you have a window. If you can't get that one in, like a T minus an hour or whatever, you're not going to take it up. And then we commit ourselves to a Monday night meeting, like Concord. And we say, okay, got another three hours from, maybe we could start a little earlier. Some people have asked, you know, maybe 6:30 to 9:30, so it's not so terrible on people that have to get home. And we just say, okay. But again, we still probably have to cap. We can't have like all new things come in. But we could probably then get through. And by the way, again, if MBTA is the first day, which I would strongly advocate, you're not going to have 1,000 people the next day. You're going to struggle for a quorum.
Right.
Which maybe is okay, because, you know, not so many people raising their hand about stuff. But, so that's, that's the thought piece that I want, I wanted to present to you and have you think about. We, the select board have to exhibit the discipline to manage. We're at the point where we really have to manage this process if we want to be, if we agree. Again, if we agree that there is a worthy goal of really managing people's time and not overimposing them.
So David, let me make sure I'm clear on these two. So you're saying, okay, so the first model is, you know, you name whatever the time slot is, but there's a defined time period. Let's go 12 to 4.
Yeah.
And you go.
Well, we use our judgment based on the issues.
Right.
And we down-select. Just because somebody raises their hand that they want a warrant doesn't mean we have to accept it, right?
Uh-huh.
We could say, those aren't as important. I mean, we have to do MBTA because we're running out of time.
Right.
And if we want to do a public, a building, you know, public safety building within a rea, if you don't make the cycle, you, you get even further behind. So, you know, those are two that you could say are non-negotiable due to time constraints. The other two, again, I, I may be being unfair to them, but those are bylaws that other towns have adopted years and years ago.
So that we tell them, you got to wait till spring?
Or some other time, yeah. Next fall. I mean, it's not popular, maybe. They say, well, 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 you know, why, why me, right? But if you, I'm just saying, if we're serious about time boxing, we have to impose that discipline.
Got it.
And we can't, and from a moderator's perspective, we can't really push to time-box issues. So MBTA, for example.
That's going to raise.
I imagine sitting there.
Yep.
And hearing, if, you know, for people that have been engaged, you, you're going to hear a lot of individual testimonials, which are valuable.
Right.
But at some point, a lot of minds are made up and it's time to vote.
Yes.
And.
People.
And it's not an option to say the select board wants to keep this to a two-hour discussion or something.
You know, it depends on your moderator.
And I don't, I don't know how other towns have done this or how long they've gone, but it, it's something that could be.
It's a conversation with, with, with Wayne, but the moderator's an independent person, right?
No, but this is a, this is a specific, a unique issue. Like, normally, it's, it's fine. This one in particular, I can see could just go.
I could see it like a brokered convention.
Yes.
You know, if those things go on for days until you come up with a solution that works for enough.
Not only are we voting on a solution, but we have to vote on zoning language, yes?
Yeah.
That should be.
And we don't know if it's two, if N is two or two plus more. You know, that's another thing that this.
Yeah, they're looking to.
I've been, I've been sitting in on the planning board meetings, and they're doing an amazing job. I mean, they're really drilling down. But, you know, floor amendments, I don't like that. I want this one, change this to that. So there's so many variables. I believe that Wayne, Wayne's intention, there's a couple of things we've learned, right? One of which is, again, I think I've said to this, to you before, but the guy in Andover, for example, he says when he's contentious issue, the moderator, these are facts not to be debated. We're going to agree on those. If you come to the mic and you want to go to those, I'm going to shut you off. Because we, I don't want to, I don't want to relitigate stuff we know. Wayne's going to adopt that. So that's one thing. I've suggested he's been kind of reluctant to this as, you know, like, again, and if you have multiple options, it's a problem, but for and against, or for, one, two, or three. And people can line up behind that microphone, and then at least you can get a balance, and you can kind of judge who's, you know, going on. I mean, these are some simple things. The last one we're considering, you know, I suggested to him that there's some sequence if there's like two variables. Instead of using the clicker to say yes or no, we say, do you like one or do you like two? Of two options, let's say, right? And they can use the same two-button clicker. Or he can get the company to bring him fancy clickers out of nothing. I mean, there's a bunch of things he can do, but the biggest thing he can do as moderator is simply say, you know, you have 30 seconds. And if he perceives it's a repeat, he says, you're repeating, goodbye. Like, he could be tougher, but I don't.
Or we could call the question.
Yes, I think the question can be.
He does not have to allow that, yeah.
Right. And he won't allow it if he doesn't feel there's still time for debate. So I mean, listen, it would, to me, a two-hour block of substantive debate is okay. Not a big issue like that, right? And three hours gets pretty long, so hopefully it's not three hours.
It's just that the debate then runs into, okay, voting. And then the voting could be a kind of a morass of different things, and we don't know. We, we project this out, and David, I liked your, how you started saying, oh, I'd like to have the timeframe. And I think Brian may have suggested that, and that's a great idea. But then you get into the reality of, okay, so if this does drag on, and, and you say, okay, well, we're going to end it, but it doesn't end, and then you say, well, we got to cut the fire station because we don't have time for that. So, so then do you drop that?
Right. So it's, well, it's interesting. So the suggestion that we came up with was, if it's going to be a lot of people, like way more than the 300, right?
Yeah.
And it's Sunday afternoon, and we start, and we don't have the food truck because that didn't seem to resonate. So we have it start at noon, and we start a little earlier, right? The suggestion is you actually start with the fire station thing, because a lot of people are going to be dribbling in.
Yeah.
And they'll want to be a part of MBTA. So you, you start with that, and you might get it done in half an hour, 45 minutes. And then by then, everybody's settled in, and then the rest of the afternoon is about MBTA. And when you're done, listen, if it goes past, okay, but we're deep in the issue at that point, right?
Yeah.
And people can go home, but they probably want to stay to vote. But you don't then have in your mind that you've got three other issues you've got to cover.
And there will be a mass exodus that creates this question.
MBTA, yeah.
And, and.
Yeah.
The logistics of having people leaving from all the different.
Yeah, well, it will take more time too, because they have to check in with each little satellite. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a unique thing.
Is there a world where you just do MBTA on Sunday?
You could do it that way.
And it's its own.
That's okay too. I mean.
I don't know.
No, there's a, every, they're all worlds. You just have to decide if you want a second. Now, let's get to the other thing. There was no appetite from our committee to abandon Sunday and go Monday, Tuesday, for example.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought so.
And I agree. I think we should continue the weekend experiment. I think, again, if we start early enough, people will show up. They want that issue. But, you know, by 5:00, let's say, they're like, it's dinner time. Like, it's Sunday night. I've got shit to do, right? You know what I mean? So it's not fair to people. I think it's also, it's disrespectful in some way to just drag these things on.
Right.
And Wayne's going to have to be, Wayne will be, I may be a little harsh on him. Wayne will be sensitive to, there, there's no way there's not repeti, if it goes like the 3, 4, there's no way it's not repeating itself, right? There's no way. There's not that many things to talk about.
Unless people make amendments.
Even that. They're still going to bring up the same issue. So I, I believe that.
David for moderator.
Yeah. That's it. I'd have the, I'd have like the door with her.
So are you looking for, do you want us to think about this? Do you want people to chime in with initial thoughts?
You know, all of the above. I don't, you don't have to decide tonight.
Right.
I definitely think tomorrow we could spend a few minutes on your reflections of what I said about civic engagement. Because it's very important in the long run that we understand the best way to, we have a certain unique form of government, and I love it. And I think if you look across the entire globe, there are only a few true democracies. And even in those democracies, there's very few places where an individual can really make their opinion heard in a meaningful way. And we happen to live in one of those places, so we shouldn't give that up, but we, I think we should.
For me, on the surface, I don't have necessarily a, I don't think it's a, you need to discuss it, but it's not disqualifying if you had two nights, two days, like we've always done. But I would strongly suggest that you schedule and promote what the acts are each night, so to speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think you would have to that.
And I, I think for, I would think most residents would appreciate that and wouldn't necessarily have an issue with that. So I don't, again, I don't know if it's the right decision, but I don't think that's necessarily a big ask to do.
I don't think people would mind if we were, I think people would appreciate it if we did time-box it, so that if they're coming for that, they know.
Yeah, and if you're done earlier.
Right. And if you happen to really like the demo bylaw, if that's your thing, and you don't care about the other one.
You come on that night.
You come that day. And that's what, that's what happens in Concord. People pick and choose. The other thing that we talked about is, it is live-streamed on, is it Miniman or YouTube? It's on one of those or both of those, right? So we have to do a better job at promoting that link. And again, in the spirit of democracy, it's okay if you want to stay home and listen. And then when it's moving towards a vote.
You show up.
Drive down, show up and vote. That's okay. You don't have to be there to raise your hand all the time. You could get the information, and then you could come and vote. It's, it's a little different, but.
Could Wayne do something to assist with that? To say like, 10 minutes to vote, like?
Well, yeah. No, no, we did.
Because sometimes it's hard to know when, like, you're suddenly.
We did talk about that. We could do that. We could say, we could say, those of you listening, you know, remotely, we are planning to take a vote in the next 1,500, 20 minutes. Don't come in. What's the difference?
And it happens anyway. People arrange it so that like I'm there, like my husband does this.
Does he watch on TV?
He texts me.
No.
Not usually.
He tells me this, but.
No, no, he doesn't tell me that. He just says, give, you know, text me when it's close to a vote.
But I haven't noticed, I, I haven't noticed in our town meetings that suddenly there's a whole bunch of people.
Yeah.
But these, these other ones, the demo by, even though they're not on the radar, they will be on people's.
They will. That's my point.
And there will be a lot of interest in them.
And, and you know what, also, Scott, what will be compounding that is that they haven't gotten nearly the run-up.
Right, that the MBTA is getting.
People are going to wake up to that like a week or two before, and they're going to be like, I have all these questions. And those two bodies, there is no way they'll prepare the level of, the planning board's done a ton of work, right? They're putting stuff out all the time. They just won't be that much material, which means you're going to have way more expository questions, you know, and you can't say they're not legitimate. Like, well, what about this Martian? What about, you know?
Well, and also, we have a, you know, we have staff that are doing a lot of work for the MBTA.
Right.
And that's not so much the case for the, well, but not for the, his com, right? So, I mean, one of the questions is, can we, is there a way that we can provide support?
Well, it gets, yes.
So that more of that info and organizing.
We made a big, we made a big focus of committee outreach last time.
No, I know, but organizing like an open, you know, once, once it gets on people's radar, you do a September open house around the demo play.
Well, going back to the calendar, that's where, again, I, I think closing, if we go with the multi-issue model, I would, I would certainly advocate an early close. I wouldn't wait till September. I'd close it like, I'd leave it open for about a month, and that's it. Because we already know what they are. And then I would really work, and we will certainly do some of this, to work with the, the liaisons should work with those committees and say, you guys, if you really want to get this thing going, you got to get to work, like right after Labor Day. Like, you got to, you should be thinking about what you need, and you got to hit it right after Labor Day, because you have like a month, and it's a busy month, and people are going back to school. Like, you got to get on people, you know, and, and they haven't. Planning board's got it. They understand that now, the marketing plan. But most of the ones don't really.
I think that's the important, also, decision in here, is if we are going to limit the number of articles and maybe, you know, not include some of these wetland or demo, we should notify, we should decide and notify early.
Early, yeah, early. Right, exactly. Right. So anyway.
Okay.
That's it. I thank you for listening. I mean, we can.
Do you want, does the, does the committee want time on the 22nd to revisit this? Because I do think we need to make a, a decision on this.
Nancy's.
Particularly if the decision was to limit the articles. We do need to tell.
Since, Brian and Nancy, you're. Since, Brian and Nancy, you're on, I see you're on, you, can we invite them to come? There's not a, we didn't make a joint meeting, but. Brian, do you have anything to add to this dialogue, particularly a question of?
We don't have a draft.
Do we wanna get the committee, or Nancy, do we wanna get the committee in front of?
It's historic, isn't it?
Do we wanna meet as a joint meeting? We don't have our own meeting scheduled again till the end of August, but.
We don't have them scheduled to come even talk to us, right?
Definitely happy to do another joint meeting over the course of the summer, but to answer your other question, no, I don't think, I have anything else to add, you summarized it very well.
Okay, Nancy?
I, I don't have anything to add either.
Okay, all right. You know, we can meet as a committee, I, as I've said, I think, I think it's important to get Wayne in. I think, once we have some idea of where, how we wanna do it, so maybe it is, you, I noticed you had a placeholder in the twenty-second, right?
Yeah, there's a placeholder.
So, if Wayne could make it.
In demo, we were, we were trying to get demo bylaw in here and, and they can't come until the twelfth, so.
Of August.
Of August.
Well, I, again, philosophically, it's almost better if you don't know, because they're gonna block out urgent everything.
From an agenda standpoint, we do have a, a last, Glenn, we'll talk about it tomorrow, but we do have an open spot to, to.
You know, we could, we can, let's think about it, if, if Wayne's available, it might be good. He's not available tonight.
Okay.
And, so, but, anyway, so I think, it's stuff to think about.
I just don't know how much more we're gonna know in a month versus in two weeks, so we should probably.
Well, my point, I guess, guys, I don't know how much you need to know.
That's what I, yeah, so.
This is like a philosophical thing, and we already know that there's more than you can cram into.
I'm all for closing the warrant early and just picking up, picking our lane, and, because we're, it's not that far away.
No, I mean, not much is honestly, what's gonna happen if you close it August eighth versus September eighth, like.
Well, you also, I think, run the risk, we need to make sure that there's a lot, information gets out to people about when we're closing it, not just the mosquito, but also some social media. Because if you, if we close it even earlier than being proposed, you don't want some people that were planning to bring something in to say, wait, what, what happened to?
Well, you'd have to give notice, right.
You know, resident engagement and.
So, when's our, we have twenty-second and then what?
We have July twenty-second, August twelfth, August twenty-sixth.
So, yeah, I would say, if by next meeting, we made a decision on closure, we could notice just the plenty of time, two, three weeks, four weeks.
Well, this is a special town meeting too, so I don't feel quite as like.
It's not like, right, if, if.
I don't feel this obligation to, I mean, the annual town meeting's not gonna be too far away after we get through this one, so.
Well, you know, again, from my own sort of time discipline, I'm, I'm like a bus stop guy, right?
Yeah.
The bus comes at four fifty-five. If you're there at four fifty-five, you get on the bus. If you're there at four fifty-six, you wait for the next bus. Like, that's a basic thing, right?
Let's talk to Wayne about that.
Yeah.
All right.
And just one other thing, just thinking about the CPA money.
Yeah.
You know, we had talked about doing another round of, another grant round.
Yeah.
For the fall. And I know in particular, there are a couple of, we made one mistake, we being the.
Oh, so some grant recommendations.
Yeah, and, but maybe we don't wanna, you know, we should decide, we, we should discuss that tomorrow night.
Yeah.
To see if we wanna hold off, but it was, there are a couple of things that people would.
Again, I'm not, I'm not personally concerned with, if, if there's three or four things that we feel we can essentially consent agenda or quickly riff through. And that's an extra fifteen, twenty minutes. To me, personally, yeah, it's okay.
If you put that on the front end, yeah.
I'm worried about engaging in a really meaty issue that clips another hour or two on top of things, right? And definitely not wanting to do that when people are fatigued at the end of whatever.
Right.
It's gonna be an emotional thing, MBTA, so, like you say, maybe it's its own thing and everything else gets, so, okay.
Okay, so you'll check with Wayne on the.
I can check with Wayne for the twenty-second, yeah.
All right, excellent. So, let's move on to the town administrator bylaw implementation.
So, for clarity for me, we're gonna send out that the warrant is open. Should we, should we send out a warning that it may close?
Soon.
As soon as August twelfth? Or should we just say?
I would say August twenty-sixth would be probably the early. I mean, that's, I don't think much is gonna be going on, I, I, I don't think, August twelfth seems a little tight.
Short.
August twenty-sixth seems a reasonable, it's end of the month.
What do you think, Barney?
Well, yeah, of course, a lot of people aren't even around too, right at the end of August. But I do think we should tell people, we're, yeah, we're gonna close it much earlier than they might be expecting. Why don't we just wait on this till tomorrow? We can sort of circle back on, on what we wanna publicize now, having opened it, do we wanna fix it? Do we, are we ready to fix it date?
Tomorrow, you mean our meeting with Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, the goals meeting, oh, no, I was actually thinking, our goals conversation tomorrow night. Just so all five of us can make a decision together about the, the end date, the closing of the warrant date.
But you, does that work if you, if we revisit this tomorrow? Or do you wanna get something out tomorrow?
And people are, they're gonna immediately wanna know dates. So, we'll tell them it's open, and I will give them a snippet of the discussion and then.
Or can you wait till Thursday to let people know?
I can.
Twenty-sixth of August.
There is media on, so.
You think that's.
No, I know, that's fine, but yeah.
No, it's fine.
Mary Lynn will.
I think it's fine.
Recognize that we've said it's gonna close earlier than usual, but we could decide. The closing of the warrant? No, well, we were saying maybe we oughta, I mean, I look.
Why don't we just, I mean, we could always move it back if we had to, right?
Right, we can change it.
Why don't we set an early bogey and if, if that creates issues, that we can address that down the road, not that I'm saying we would. But, I mean, I think August twenty-sixth gives enough, enough of a time, and that allows Ryan to.
Committees have to meet to draft language to submit, or they just put a placeholder?
No, the schedule, well.
Language and a summary is due, yeah.
Placeholder, but then the summary would be due, you know, less than thirty days after that.
Well, that's okay, less than thirty days, but I'm just sensitive to committees not meeting frequently over the summer, right?
Right.
That's the only thing, I mean, I was advocating for a re-close, I'm not trying to un-advocate for that, but. If it's conscom, like, what's their meeting schedule, like, you know?
Well, conscom is gonna be able to.
We have a placeholder for that, so.
It's, it's a placeholder, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be final language or final motion, or, it's just the placeholder language, correct?
Yeah, I mean, mainly what.
It should be okay then.
Yeah, I mean, but it's telling anybody that was considering something that we haven't heard about yet, you've only got.
We should've heard about it by now.
Yeah.
Well, I learned three things I didn't know. I learned you guys are thinking about some appropriation. I learned that we're gonna take up the solicitor bylaw again, and then there was some.
It's kicking around, it's not necessarily.
But I'm just saying that, then that needs to be rounded up in the next month or so.
September ninth to November second is not a lot of time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Well, Wayne would certainly be in support of early close.
Yeah.
Because early close focuses everybody, the ones we have in front of us.
Because we closed for the spring one in, what?
That one was open a long time.
But that was, right, but it, we closed it in what, February?
Earlier than usual, we closed it in, what, February?
February, March, April, May, like, three months, this is two months, like.
Yeah.
There's, if you're not prepared by the twenty-sixth, I don't think you'd be prepared to have your whole communications and outreach and everything.
They're gonna need, I agree with you, they're gonna need, those committees are gonna need a fair amount of time to get it.
So, this would force, in some ways, this would force you to.
Yes.
Engage early.
Yep, I absolutely agree.
All right, so do we wanna entertain a motion tonight then, to set that August twenty-sixth as the close of the warrant?
Sure.
So moved, are you making a motion?
So moved, yeah.
So moved, so.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Very good. All right, now on to town administrator bylaw implementation. Ryan?
All right. So, there seems like a lot here, but it can be summarized pretty quickly. The, the new bylaw essentially talks about authorities and primarily that the town administrator's authority, but other authorities still remain. So, I'd like you to think about employees in four different categories. So, one of them is the positions that you identified that the select board directly hires. And that includes the police chief, the fire chief, the town clerk, the town treasurer-collector, and town council. Those are your, your appointments, and that's clearly laid out in the bylaw. Then there's three categories of employee that I, I would be involved in more directly now that there, a bylaw exists. So, the first is, is my direct appointments. So, these are employees that you did not identify as your authority, and that did not, that do not require consultation with another board. Or do not, I sent it to you late today.
Okay, so it's not in the packet, okay.
So, think of direct appointments as, the bylaw says, the town administrator shall now appoint this person, and there's no other language around that appointment. I'll give you an example, the town accountant would be directly hired.
But don't you already now directly hire those people?
Only because you've delegated that authority to me.
But in practical terms, that, none of that changes, right?
Correct. The whole thing really can be snapped back immediately with just your authority, but we won't reopen that, that can of worms. So, the second category that I would be involved in is what, what the bylaw describes as collaborative appointments or consultations. So, these are employees that I need to consult with another board that has been identified by Mass General Law as someone who used to have hiring authority.
What's an example of that?
An example of that is the Board of Assessors, Board of Appeals, Historical Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board. And then the third category of employee is those who are working for someone else, not you and not me. So, that is the library, the fire department, and the board of health. Okay, so, if you think about in those four buckets, I think it's a little bit easier. So, your direct hires, my direct hires, my hires where I need to consult with a board that normally, where they used to have hiring power, and then completely separate entities.
Is this just because you wanna include us in category three, where the planning board hiring for that? You didn't, you, you would have under the bylaw the authority to do that, but you're saying, I just wanna bring them along?
The bylaw says that I shall consult with them.
Shall consult.
So, that's what makes them their own special category.
And, so, in category three, the, the, the different groups would, would officially declare their director of HR, which I don't believe, they, they don't all have done that now, correct? That, that's a new thing that we would ask them to do, but they would not be required to do?
Yeah, so this is the implementation of, of a clearer role for me.
Right.
So, I'd like to walk you through each type and then take your questions.
And before we do that, there's, and then there's the other piece of the, sending the legislation in, and it, how does this, that's just the, the draft legislation and the cover letter, correct?
I'm assuming you have no problem submitting your bylaw, yeah, so that's just a vote.
So, should we just vote and get that done? I, I don't wanna miss that. So, the first piece of it is just send in the.
Do you just send it in?
It's a, it's a cover letter that they wrote with basically that says, here's the draft legislation for your.
Goes to somebody who racks and stacks these issues.
Senator Barrett and Simon Cataldo.
They're gonna sponsor it.
You're telling them to submit this on your behalf.
I move to authorize Ryan McLean to submit to the legislature on behalf of the select board, special legislation authorizing the town of Carlisle to pass a bylaw that expands the duties and responsibilities of the town administrator position pertaining to town personnel as authorized by Article twenty-three of the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five annual town meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion on this piece of it? Do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? And so with this, we should also reach out to those representatives with some expressed urgency around the need to do this. Okay, and what's, what's the best way, just emails, or is there anything else we can do tactically to?
Well, not to show everyone what happens behind the curtain, but we'll write you a nice email that you can forward to.
Very good.
To the legislature.
Okay.
Okay, so, believe it or not, we're still involved in, in all hiring and firing and discipline in HR. So, for your appointments, this is the police chief, the fire chief, the town clerk, the treasurer-collector, and the town council. When a vacancy occurs here, we would notify you. Then we would create a plan and timeline and present this to you in open session for your approval or your modification or whatever. So, you can imagine, you can do what you did for the police chief last time, where you put together an assessment center and a screening committee, and the final interviews come in front of you. All the way down to delegating the authority to me and Aubrey to hire the treasurer-collector, because you don't want it to be an open process. But in every vacancy, we'll come to you and ask you how you want to hire your person. And that's, that's really it. For discipline of your people, of your direct appointments, we would notify you, because you have delegated authority of day-to-day management to, to myself. We would notify you of any disciplinary action taken. And this would be done in executive session, and the employee has the right to grieve to you that we have exceeded our authority, or that you have exceeded your authority. And the same thing with, with termination. So, if one of your employees was recommended for termination, we would bring it to you in executive session, and then you would, you would have to meet with that employee and decide. So, I think that one's fairly simple and, and not that different than now. So, you're gonna see it as the same general theme in all of these, because you're still involved and I'm still involved in all of these. So, for my direct appointments, so this is the authority that has now been granted to me by this new bylaw. We would create a hiring plan, and we would bring that to you in open session, and this could be done prior to the vacancy existing. So, we'll say, this is how we will normally hire this type of person. And if you agree that that's the right way to hire, say, a police officer, then we will just go execute that policy within your parameters and bring you an appointment, or notify you of an appointment.
Again, don't you do that now?
Yes.
But only, it sounds like only because we're delegating on a one-off basis?
Well, no, not on a one-off, we've delegated it.
So, this is so that I'm.
Now, we don't have to delegate it.
So, I'm hiring, so I'm just wanting you to be comfortable with how we're gonna hire. So, anything outside of that general strategy, we would bring to you, if there was something off, right, or different? Like, we wanna pay this employee more, or we wanna restructure the department in this way. We wanna eliminate this position, we would bring that to you in open session.
Yeah. I thought you, your example of the police officer, I thought that you were trying to get away from that because you didn't wanna have, you know, hold up a police officer who's in a different district or whatever. So, wouldn't you just have the authority to go do it, execute it, and make the offer, and they're done? Or are we still?
Yeah, so what we're doing tonight is explaining to you the hiring process, and if you accept that for our direct hires, then we know we have your blessing to.
To go hire that person, so they don't need to, because you used the word appointment, so we don't have to appoint them anymore?
No.
Okay.
And you'd just be telling us under the HR report, or whatever.
You hired a police officer.
Yeah, yeah.
Generally, you would know that a vacancy existed and that we were following, because we like to communicate. Same thing with discipline, I would notify you if I disciplined an employee.
And this notification, just for clarity, is, can be an email? It's not a, it's not to be, obviously not an open meeting, is that the mechanism typically?
Yes, we would notify all of you immediately that discipline happened, and then you could decide as a board to bring that into some discussion of my knowledge, skills, and abilities. And the same thing with the termination. So, that would be town administrator hire, so anyone not identified, not in consultation, or not with their own authority. For the second type, that we're calling collaborative appointments, instead of bringing it to you, we would bring it in the same way to that relevant board. So, we would tell them either ahead of time, before vacancy existed, with their blessing to go ahead and hire in that way, or when their vacancy exists, we'd go to them and say, this is our plan.
And this is like a who?
Be the conservation administrator, or.
So, these are people who support those independent, or those multi-member boards?
Correct.
But still fall under.
But not the, for.
Not the board of health.
They still fall under.
Libraries of fire or the board of health.
So, in order for this to happen now, it would require these boards and committees to either vote to delegate that authority or sign some type of memorandum of agreement with you and me that this is the way they wanna go.
That they, no, no, go ahead.
Until the legislation is approved.
Correct.
And then, and then it's not, no longer required that they have to.
Well, it's required that I consult, and this is how I've defined consulting.
Right, but you wouldn't have to go through this process of, of creating a hiring plan and a timeline that you, that you present to the relevant board.
I wouldn't have to, but I would, right. I wouldn't have to, but I would, right.
Okay.
But again, you kind of do that now, right?
We do do that now.
Yeah, okay.
As we stated over and over through this process, nothing would change, we're just formalizing it. The biggest thing that changes is we don't have to go to you for each van hire, van driver hire, or police officer hire.
Yeah.
Okay, and then same thing with a discipline and termination, these boards would be.
You skipped category three, so.
He's still on category two.
Oh, exactly, you're going that way, okay.
Okay, so category three.
Top to bottom.
This one is the most.
Interesting.
Interesting, because they don't have to do any of this, but the, the thing that we're recommending is that each board or department identify and define their human resource responsibilities, including the delegation of authority to any staff or board members. This protects the town from liability. So an example would be, for some boards, the, the authority lies with the chair, but that does not codify it in any way, nor is it in any Massachusetts general law, it's just practice that Carlisle does. So we're recommending that boards vote to do that, because putting, as we learned in the debates about this, putting power in one person's hand isn't necessarily the best way to do it when you're talking about something like health or library services. But because it's HR, to do it as a board requires a significant amount of public, public input. So we're suggesting that these boards vote to describe how they're going to conduct their human resource processes, to include evaluations, discipline, termination, hiring, and day-to-day management. So if this, if, say, the Board of Health wants me to sign Linda's timesheet, which I do now, or Janine's timesheet, which I do now, they should be more descriptive about what, what oversight I have on signing that timesheet, or if, if I'm involved in the review process, or any disagreement between folks, and this is the same thing with libraries as well, which is a independent building and everything, they should be using HR and best practices and personnel policies, and we need to know how they're going to do that and enforce those standards in the day-to-day management of employees.
But there's nothing compelling them to do so.
So they are required to follow human resource law. So every time they don't, assuming they don't, they put the town at tremendous legal liability and risk. So it would be in the town's best interest to enforce that standard.
What does that mean?
What is the human resource?
So there are rules.
They can't, they can't.
Can't avoid.
Sexual harass, or, you know, stuff like that. But, but if, if a particular individual decides that she wants to work 10 to 2, and her board says okay, then she works, she's not breaking on the HR law, right?
Correct, yeah. But I would be unwilling to sign a timesheet.
You don't have to sign it.
That says that employee was working.
But you couldn't not pay her, but you couldn't say, well, you didn't work the full 36, so you don't get paid.
But I would say liability-wise, without knowledge of someone's hours and when they work, and if they're working, it would be fraudulent to sign a timesheet, and I'd be.
I'm not saying you should sign it. I'm saying, they don't, that board doesn't ask you to sign it, they say, don't sign it, Ryan, that's fine, but you can't withhold that person's pay if, if they've gotten the approval of their board to set those hours, right? They're not breaking on the HR law, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Correct, yeah, you're talking about a specific, but I do sign that timesheet now.
You do now, but I'm just saying, if, what I'm trying to get at is, is nobody can break the law, they can't smoke marijuana in the building, or whatever, but these squishy issues, which are really the troublesome ones, you still have no authority, and if you don't want to sign the timesheet, or you don't like the way they dress at work, and they get the approval of their board, those three boards, they're like, big whoop.
Correct.
Okay.
So the, what we're suggesting is that.
Why are you signing the timesheets?
Yeah, well, I was wondering, for those, for those boards, like, why, why wouldn't you make them sign off the chair, the, whatever, sign it?
It requires them physically coming here.
That's great, if you want to get paid, get your tail in there and sign.
No, I, I, I signed his timesheet.
Right.
And they opted, you know, they.
But, I mean, even you don't know.
When I was a library trustee, it was very difficult for one of the three of us to get over here to sign Martha's timesheet.
It was difficult?
It was.
But that's part of the responsibility of having your own employees.
Right, right, that's right, I absolutely agree.
With that freedom, with that responsibility.
I would not sign those timesheets.
We should have brought that up at town meeting.
Well, just let them, let them chew on that, they should go and sign the timesheets.
In terms of the.
Trying to move this forward.
In terms of the implementation, it would be, it would be best practice if these boards would discuss these things. So when that authority was delegated to me, I was told, there's no way we would know if the person needed time off.
No kidding.
So that's why I sign it.
It's, it's, it's a little, I mean, the consequences are quite dire, does that employee not get paid that week?
They're not dire, this is, no, I totally disagree.
Okay.
This is the bargain they made, they want independence, have at it, baby, you're not getting the support, you, you can't cherry pick that I want these services, but I don't want these services.
Ah.
They don't get that right. I would absolutely not sign that timesheet.
Okay.
I would say, you, your chair, you get in here, make sure that that person gets paid, sign the damn timesheet.
Signing off on the timesheets was not part of the basket of goods offered when we were talking.
What Ryan's trying to do is trying to.
See, I'm calling it a basket of goods, but.
But he's not going to, he failed that back.
He didn't, the Select Board failed.
So we failed, and now I think we should tell them, congratulations, you guys carved your independence, here's what you guys are going to do, I totally.
But, but if he can bring him in the fold here, and we're going to move on, I don't know.
So you don't want you to take, have liability for something if.
So it's not me, it's the town. So the town, if, if an employee does something wrong, the town would face legal suit or, or problem, fraudulent timesheets, or actions done by employees. So the reason for, for following the HR law is to prevent the town expending resources on something that was done. So you hire a professional HR director in order to implement personnel policies that have been decided.
Correct.
And then my job is to enforce their execution.
So.
What we're recommend.
Go ahead.
What we're recommending is that the, the boards clarify their, their HR functions and who's doing what, so we know what lanes we're in, and then that we have the ability to bring, because we, we still do HR functions, so we still bring recommendations for hiring, discipline, and termination to the boards, and then we have a clear avenue of understanding how they will execute those functions.
Yeah, so why, I, my thought would be, this is here, and if they, if, if one of the three boards does not want to define.
Two boards and the fire chief.
Okay.
I presume the fire chief signs his own guy's timesheets, right? Right, so it's actually not.
And who signs his timesheet?
Me.
Yeah.
Delegated from you.
That's okay.
What I was going to say is, it's, it's kind of up to each board, right? If they're, if they want to work out a, a process that, and, and clarify what they're going to do, what they'll be responsible for, and then what authority they're turning over to the town administrator, then that's, that's what gets approved, you know, publicly, and, but if they want to retain the authority for all these different things that we're raising now, then that's what they choose to do, and then, and then you don't, you no longer have the responsibility for signing timesheets, right? I mean, can't they choose with a full understanding of what it would mean to be responsible for their staff person? I mean, that's their choice, right, in this process of defining the HR responsibilities, including delegation of authority to staff or board members?
I think the main thing that I would like to convey is that the whole board.
Right.
All the trustees, all the Board of Health members, and the Select Board with the Fire Department.
Right.
Understands who has what authority and doing what.
Yes.
Because it, it was clear to me that, that some board members don't know.
Mm-hmm.
The process of, and library trustees and, and Board of Health members, that, that I sign a timesheet, or I.
Yes.
Don't sign one, or approve time off, or don't, or involved in evaluations or not.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree, I think it's very important for that to be very clear.
So what do you need from us?
So the, it, it would be helpful and clarifying, especially for your personnel policy discussions, if the relevant boards were to agree, or to modify, or to comment on the implementation of this, and it would definitely be great if you would bless this as a Select Board for your, for the processes on your hires and my hires, so that we can do that now. For example, we had a van driver who came in late, we couldn't make the agenda, we'd like to hire the van driver because we're short on van drivers, but we'd have to wait until the 22nd to appoint. So if you did pass this tonight, or vote on this, then I could appoint that van driver inside your parameters and notify you at the next.
Sure.
This is a policy? What is this?
This is making the TA bylaw effective now, but the TA bylaw doesn't define everything, because you wanted to keep it.
Right.
Relatively policy-driven, so this is.
So it is a policy.
This is a swing at what that means.
This is a policy.
Which would then be policy.
It's a, it's a policy, which we have the authority to do, because it carries out the groups we don't have authority over.
Well, we have the authority to.
Well, I guess what we'd say, category one and category two.
We have the authority on category one and category two.
Yeah.
Category three requires, we don't have the authority on category two yet, if they agree to it, then it enacts, otherwise it doesn't occur till we have special legislation passed. Category three, we, it's always just a recommendation. So tonight, whatever we approve would go into effect for category one, it would go into effect if category two agrees to it, votes on it and agrees to it, and in category three, it's always just going to be a.
Well, it's also if they agree to it, right? Category three.
Yeah, if they agree to it, but there's, it's.
So what's to clarify, what's being asked tonight is, you've already delegated your authority to me for, for most things.
Mm-hmm.
This would be reaffirming that in the model of the, the town administrative bylaw as an example to others. The category two and category three employees are conversations that liaisons are going to have to have.
So we, so we can't actually approve this, we don't have the authority.
We could.
We could just, we could.
Approve.
Express our support.
We could support it, we could indicate our support of it, and then you have to go.
And we could also approve the process that he's laying out under the category one.
Well, yeah, but he already has that, so.
I know, but we're.
We can reaffirm that, yes, he has the authority over category one, but I think the cleaner thing is indicate our support of this approach and tell you to go off and get support from those other boards and committees, right?
Does that work?
Hopefully hand-in-hand with liaisons who.
Right.
Talk about the policy.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
It does give me a little, well, it does give me a lot more authority in that I'm appointing, not you, if you approve this.
Right. I'm comfortable with that.
Do you have a motion?
So we, the motion would be that we approve the town administrator appointments slash roles memo provided by the town administrator, we, we.
I don't think you can do that, I think we have to bifurcate it and say.
I can simplify it, you, you would be approving the implementation of the town administrative bylaw, or delegating the authority as written by the town administrative bylaw. All I did was describe to you what that would look like.
Delegating the authority.
So the motion is to delegate the authority to the town administrator as described in the TA bylaw?
Or in the informational memorandum.
Or this memory, or this.
Delegate this, this document?
This was just an attempt to show you what it would look like. The TA bylaw does grant this authority.
Right, but the Eki.
We've already voted on the TA bylaw.
Yeah, we really support that.
This is just clarifying how you're going to implement it.
Right?
No, I don't, I don't agree, I think, I think that this, at its, at the now time is the transitional authority between now and whenever MGL approves the bylaw, and not what comes forward.
For category two.
Well, period, and then it mostly affects category two. So I think we can vote to affirm that the process outlined in category one is, we agree to it, and then he has that, because he always had that anyway, I'm not sure if he does anything, and indicate our support for his approach to categories two and three, and recommend that he start socializing that to get the agreement of those boards affected, and then we can always circle back if they agree, and we can codify it into policy. That's, that's the limit of our authority, I think.
So what's the.
Would that work? So what would the motion look like tonight?
Well, we would move to approve the process outlined in the memorandum for the quote-unquote category one employees, and further recommend that the town administrator, in conjunction with the Select Board liaisons to the relevant boards and committees that fall under the categories two and three, work with those boards and committees to gain their support for the processes outline.
Yeah. I just would vote to support the memorandum.
All right.
I like that language.
I gave it my best.
Informational memorandum.
This is, lays out what, how he's going to implement it, and I think he's looking for support, so that he can go to the staff.
Great, you support.
And committees and say, this is what I showed the Select Board, this is what I, you know, they voted on.
Okay, fair enough.
Does that work for you, Ryan?
Sure, sure.
I'm, I'm worried about the back, well.
On the one side.
You know, like, people saying, well, why did, how did they get to approve it? They don't have that authority to approve it.
But we have the authority.
He's asking for our approval.
Right.
He's got the authority, he wants, he wants our approval for.
Let's do it, let's do it.
Right?
So the motion would be to approve the.
You're withdrawing your last motion, or do we?
I'll withdraw mine, well, I didn't make.
It was never seconded, so.
So we would make a motion to approve the informational memorandum provided by the town administrator tonight regarding the implementation of the new town administrator bylaw.
Sure.
Period?
Period.
Somebody writing down the motion?
No.
AI.
AI's got it.
Okay, good.
I'll second that, sure.
Okay. Additional discussion. Okay, so let's do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and so, next steps, do you want liaison, you, I'm assuming, do you want to send out an initial communication about this, and then copy the liaisons and we do a fast follow-up?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I think it's better to initially come from you versus us bringing it in, but we should be right there behind you.
Or join with you in the.
Yeah.
Conversations that you end up having, yeah.
And I'd just like to reiterate, this isn't that much different than what already exists, it's just codified.
Right.
Secondarily, haven't had a chance to comment on the TA bylaw since it passed, but the process we described is, is very collaborative and communicative.
Mm-hmm.
Some of that stuff is communicated prior to vacancies, so it's executed automatically, which helps boards, and the main point that the community could take from that is, this is for administrative positions that are very important, but don't, don't really rise to the level of the, the board necessarily, and when they have these vacancies, they want them filled immediately because they can't function, right? So the, the point of this is not policy efficiency, it's operational efficiency.
Yeah.
Second, if, if you do have a town administrator someday who does not believe in communicating or the collaborative nature of this, you should not hire them, because it's important that hiring, discipline, and termination be heavily discussed and clear to everybody, because when it gets bad, it gets bad, and when it's good, it's really good, and you should continue that, so.
Yep.
Implement it the way that it should, and it should work fine.
Yeah, that, I agree with that completely, I think we all do, so it's helpful to have Yeah. I, that's, I agree with that completely. I think we all do. So it's helpful to have it outlined here.
And I, I think recommending or requesting that these other, the category three groups do appoint someone to be the point of contact for HR. And whatever we can do to educate those boards about what the responsibilities are is important. Because we should continue to promote that. Because I, I agree. I think a lot of, especially if you're a new board member, you really have no idea. How the mechanics work and where your responsibility ends. And, and I think, I think a lot of people would appreciate understanding that. Because it is their responsibility. And then we can go from there. It's not punitive. It's just education about. And then you should have a point person into that committee or that board from an HR standpoint. If you have a question or a concern, there should be someone you can go to. Maybe it's the chair. But there should be a point of contact.
That's a good idea. Are we having, is there going to be another board and committee onboarding session this year?
This month. Yeah, later this month.
I mean, I think there should be a module on that. You know, HR liaison, how to.
Every single professional development I go to includes a class on board and board and employee relations. And most of them for me are obviously town administrator, select board, but this is an issue.
But we're not imparting that to the volunteer government necessarily, right?
Well, just the, how do you manage?
Well, that's how you guys do, but we're not doing the companion side, which is educating the volunteers, to Scott's point.
Yeah, that's. We offer it, but it's. My point was that this is a, this is a thing that has to be discussed and.
Yeah.
Clarified because it, like you said, it can be very difficult. So you should definitely be wary of a bad boss. A bad boss can ruin an organization for sure.
Yeah.
But employees can also take advantage of holes in human resource functions. We, we happen to have tremendous employees here that work much harder than they should. But there are situations when, there are situations when if there's a hole, people will take advantage of it. And that's the time when people look at government and they say, oh, government doesn't run well. So you wanna make sure that you protect against that.
Right.
When we get into goals, there's a, a few different elements that, for discussion that fall under this bucket of volunteer HR. I'll call it. Because as a volunteer, and I asked this question, I didn't, it wasn't clear. You know, are you subject to the HR policies and code of conduct if you're elected or appointed? If you're interacting with our employees, do we hold volunteers or are they held to the same standards as employees? And we, we focused a lot on the employee part of it, but I do think we, we do need to focus on.
Do we have a code of conduct for volunteers? That's something we should, that's actually something we should take up.
And just this whole onboard, we have an onboarding process for, and I'm not looking to create a whole new infrastructure. But I do think we need to think about with, with the turnover we see, with people getting new responsibilities.
Right.
It's a lot. And we need to, we need to pay attention to that and put some process in place or just borrow, use the process we have for employees.
Code of conduct. The, the school committees typically have.
Right here. Create and publicize volunteer and elected official code of conduct.
Is that in your goals?
That's one of my goals.
Good.
Well, it's, you know, it's, but, but it's, it's one specific thing, but I think there's this larger, it's a larger goal of helping, helping the volunteers. Be more effective in, in their roles and educated. All right. Anything else on the town administrator bylaw implementation? Is that it? You got what you need?
That is the start. It should take six months or so before the legislature even takes it up. So.
Yeah.
That's a long time to.
This is to cover.
Be in limbo.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think even just what, what we have now and what we've expressed and codified is such a huge leap to where the town administrator position was a few years ago. Where we had nothing, right? We didn't have a job description. So we've come a long way, still ways to go, but moving in the right direction.
Making good progress, yeah.
Making good progress. Government does not move fast. All right, let's move on to select board FY '26 goals preparation. I'm not sure how much we need to, to cover off on tonight. I did wanna generally review some of the things that we'll talk about tomorrow. And see if there's any specific goals you want me to think about, because I do wanna prepare some stuff to react to tomorrow. So what I have on, on my radar, based on feedback so far, is things that we know. Like the fire station renovation project and, and moving forward with that. The DPW project in the, in the coming year is an important one. We, we, we should have a discussion about the ever-present Highland building and the Bog House and what are our goals this year? And this gets into the need to have versus nice to have. And if it's nice to have, what's the implication there? So I think those will be discussion points. I had added, we do need to put something in there around culvert. The whole culvert plan. And we just need to figure out what our high level goals are there. And I think, you know, baking into the capital plan is important. So. In terms of budget comments, again, this was on the, the docket last year and continues as, looking at shared services, both within the town. And across towns, especially in light of some of the large potential projects we're taking on, finding, finding savings. And without compromising service is important. And I think there's, we've talked about it a long time. I think there's gonna be a clear imperative to, to need to do some things. So talking about that and what we wanna get out of the next year. And, and working with the other committees like FinCom to do that. Travis had a comment about, obviously, working with the school committee to see if there's ways to, to best manage resources. And then I had a general comment around this plan of, we have a capital plan. We need, now we need a kind of a lower resolution, but important 20-year, 30-year plan that really looks at these building projects, culverts. Some of these large things that we intend to take on and we, we hope to get approval on, figuring out what that looks like. This is critically important to special town meeting with the fire station. Maybe we don't have every dollar. But we need to give people an expectation about what we're looking at taking on. And if they move forward with the, with the fire station to the next step. What's the implication to the DPW project? So there's a whole set of things around this. I call it long-term plan. And these large projects, especially these debt projects.
Should I make a comment on that?
Yes.
So yeah, I completely agree. And I, I think that we really should spend a little bit of the time, again, at the high level philosophical view. That are we aligned? Like what, let's just use fiscal $25 and not worry about inflation. Let's just, you know, we're, we're approaching the $20,000 per property tax threshold. And we know that despite whatever trimming we do on the operating budget, it's generally gonna rise in that sort of 3% range a year. So you can just line that. You don't have to get all specific about sharing. It's just gonna go that way. So I think that, understanding philosophically, what is the app, like it gets to kind of the, it's kind of a combination of the fiscal sustainability. And sort of Carlisle character.
Yeah.
And a few other things, but mostly that. In terms of, you know, do we want a town that everything runs perfectly? The streets look great. The culverts are taken care of. We have the biggest, the big enough building for the fire apparatus. And the shed looks nice, you know. I mean, there's that. And then there's something short of that that's adequate, not perfect. Has, has limitations we're gonna live with or the get along, you know. I mean, we, we really have to. As a board, we really should get ourselves calibrated. Like what is our philosophic approach? And, and like I said, I think it's all about, and certainly you and Ryan are saying the same thing, it's all about the capital. The operating budget, we more or less manage the operating budget pretty well. And it will be on a 3 to something percent slope. It doesn't matter what else we do, that's the slope it's gonna be. So if we just set that aside, it's capital that really swings the arc. And we have all these things. Besides the big buildings, we now have these, you know, roads and culverts. And then we have, if you go down Ryan's list, there's all those other things lurking in the shadows that are coming up in the next few years. So I think, to your point, we don't do it tomorrow, but we should be able to make a reasonably high fidelity five-year plan.
Yeah.
We know those projects. And then not too bad years five through 10 plan. And I think that's like where we should start. And what does that really look like in terms of the fiscal $25 type tax bill? Where does that land us? And is that, are we comfortable with where that lands us?
Yeah. I don't think we'll get to that answer tomorrow.
No, no, it'll be tomorrow, but we could take on a modeling exercise. Again, that's, that's in big chunks. And, and what I'd like to understand a little more from people tomorrow is, let's hypothetically say, again, using now dollars. Are we comfortable with a $20,000 average tax bill? Are we comfortable with a $25,000 average tax bill? Like, like where's our tolerance for spending money?
Well, I think the other piece of that is if you sign up, it's back to the nice to have versus.
Yeah. What are the trades?
If we say, we gotta do, we gotta do a fire station, even if it's a not, not the gold standard, it's gonna be expensive. For that and the DPW and the police station and all the other stuff. The, the nice to haves fall by the wayside. We, we can no longer entertain.
Which goes counter. I'm glad you mentioned that, because then now you get into not exactly environmental stewardship. Because we're not gonna be like big polluters, but we won't be as green as we like, because green is expensive. And we might not be as caring a community as we like, because maybe we don't have the bike pathways or, you know, something like that that people. So yeah, I definitely would like to.
Well, again.
In terms of those trades and where we are from.
Go, go right to the Highland building, right? That's a, that's a building in search of a purpose for as long as I've been in town. And can, can someone come up with, with something to do with it? Sure. Is it gonna be worth, when you balance it against the other priorities?
Right.
So do we see a, if, if we don't see a path for that with town funding, what do we do with this building?
Right.
Assume you're not gonna approve $15 million for it.
Demo's cheap.
In the next 20 years.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you demo it, but like, but we, we keep, there's these projects like that that are just, keep coming back and keep us spent time on.
So I, again, not to have tomorrow's meeting tonight, I think that.
Yeah.
Understanding that tomorrow's session should, we should approach it from a philosophical perspective first. Again, we're not gonna fill in all the pieces, but at least we can get a sense of our direction.
Well, the goal over the course of the year should be that really, because we're gonna be, we're gonna be, if we're advocating for projects. Like the fire station and DPW, there are implications to those projects. And the culvert, that's probably over $30 million of stuff.
Oh yeah, it's easily.
So if we're getting behind those things, we have to be aware of what the broader implications are. All right. So all good stuff, sidewalk connectivity in Carlisle, that came up as a potential, that we should discuss because there is a lot of public support for that.
I threw out a lot of ideas.
Yep.
That's what I was.
No, but this is what we'll talk about. On the, on the environmental stewardship front or whatever, I think really Barney, you'll take the lead on this. Is working with Conscom and LSC, a potential goal is to, to have the town develop or update the land use plan and some policies around that. That might be a goal that we've talked about.
Well, and the other piece on the sustainability side is also taking advantage of the climate leader designation for us. As we're getting into these other projects.
There is.
Where there's potential for applying, taking advantage of some of the money that's available.
Climate leader grants over the next year to 18 months, we, we'll go for what, a million and a half?
One, a million plus.
Yeah.
Design, not design money, but feasibility money.
In, in our initial conversation, we're one of the first communities, we wanna be a fast mover to get that money.
Right.
So that's a potential goal, is to just make sure we maximize our climate leader grants. And then, you know, there's some, some goals around the MVP plan that we may wanna discuss as well. And then we'll talk about MBTA communities and, and what our goals are with the work and the special town meeting there. In terms of, do we, I think, you know, last year, the, the language was like, support the, support the planning board and, you know. But the, you know, what do we wanna say about, you know, supporting, because there are people that don't want the town to be in compliance. Does, do, do we take a position on that? And also, what do we wanna do as a committee? Do we just support the, the progress and the process, but we don't take a position on a, a plan or a specific tactic? Or do we not? That's something we can talk about tomorrow, because that'll inform how we operate with that process over the remaining three or four months. So we'll talk about that. I, I had a thing around the staff and volunteers and all. I think that kind of falls under the volunteer bucket. Implement a chair training program, something to that effect. But those all fall within a larger goal. Is there anything, any other large? I think the, Travis expressed this. I, I also believe this, is that we took on a lot last year. We have a lot on our plate this year, especially the first half of this year. So really focusing on seeing some of these existing projects to completion. And doing some continued, what I'll call house cleaning slash professionalization of town hall is probably a good use of our time. Is there anything else that is on individuals' radars that we wanna discuss tomorrow that might be a new project or might be something I didn't mention? And we can talk about it. It's just helpful for me to know tonight so I can pull together some language.
Well, you know, reviewing the, our goals from last year.
Yep.
The area, one of the areas where we had some, you know, sort of private conversations. But really haven't made any progress is around Benfield.
Yeah, Benfield.
And. I'm not sure what, anyway, I, I think that's a.
I had it right here.
At least a topic.
Benfield?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a problem and it's.
Board of health issue or who is?
No, it's a much bigger thing. The issue is, is, is the town going to support the capital improvements of Benfield? They're unable to take care of that. And the management company that manages it is unwilling or unable, but unwilling to spend capital there. That it doesn't have reportedly. But Brian and I met with the principals there. I don't know. It's, it's a, you're right Barney. It's going to be an ongoing saga.
But again, I, I think in the rubric of, you know, nice to have, like, it's a cleanup issue and it's ours. And so, you know, there's that. But I like where Travis, I mean, where Scott's going, like, big things, like you gotta finish what you started. We have some imperatives that cost a lot of money. We've gotta get our arms around all that. And then we have to, I think, look at that whole basket of all the other things that are there. And they all have reasons to do them and reasons to defer them. And we have to be realistic about what, you know, what are our priorities? What are our priorities? Like given, it's not infinite resources. Certainly our resources are not infinite and neither is the staff. So. Do you wanna go down that rabbit hole with what's we call it for months on end?
No, but I think what we do need to do in that case is. At least take a, a general position as a select board. Are we going to? Are we, are we willing to fund the essential sort of health and safety issues? That are not being met at Benfield? Because they are town residents. They're, and they're, but most of them can't advocate for themselves.
But yeah, but those are, yes, and I agree. But that's more like a budgeting decision for the budget company. Yeah, we can talk about it to make sure we are in agreement.
Right.
But I wouldn't call it like a goal. I would just say, if we're in agreement that that's an imperative and they can't advocate, then we put a placeholder.
Well, if it's a goal, we end up focusing on it.
Right.
And if we don't, if, if it drops off, then we're gonna not worry about it until it erupts as a problem. And then we're gonna say, why don't we focus on that?
Or maybe we, maybe we need a liaison to that, you know? No, but maybe someone just.
Let's have this meeting tomorrow.
Travis, right now. So this'll, we can discuss this tomorrow. Is there anything else in terms of?
Well, the other is on the flip side, which was the CPA goal.
Yeah.
From last year. And it's. It, I think, I think it needs to involve more than just the CPC committee to look at.
Prioritization?
Yeah, and the, and the, the funds that are currently available and those funds that have already been committed to specific categories.
Is it the same goal as last year, generally speaking? Or is it evolved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can start from, so we're, we'll open with the, the first part of the meeting, the first whatever 20, 30 minutes. We'll go back over last year's goals, do notes, and then we can pull stuff out of there that we think warrants consideration for continuing as goals. So it sounds like CPA will be another one.
Yeah.
And tick a few off, right?
Yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. Hopefully take more than a few off.
Yeah, we did a lot, I mean.
It's like the culvert. It's like, most of them are good. And then we still have a couple of needs attentions.
So 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM here. There'll be sandwiches.
At town hall?
It's right here.
Oh, okay.
On the onsite?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I thought we were offsite. I wrote offsite.
Well, we looked at offsite options, but.
We're having an onsite-offsite.
We're onsite.
There weren't any great options. And like we looked at Gleason and AC's and issue, like this was the easiest.
And we're starting at five, correct?
We can sit on that side of the room though.
There you go. Change it up.
Starting at five, yeah.
Starting at five.
All right, let's root well on here.
Let's move on. So we had a brief discussion set for the, the town scholarship funds priorities and procedures discussion. I don't know. Gretchen had included some information. I don't know how much we need to get into this tonight. When we, when we booked this time on the agenda, A, it was because of a couple, we had, we had some, some time available. And Gretchen was gonna talk to the attorneys. I don't know what the outcome of those discussions were, but we have the document in the packet. Um, I don't know what the outcome of those discussions were, but we have the document in the packet.
So that is the outcome. She summarized her, her meeting with council and created some recommendations about, she's dealt with this a lot, so Gretchen is kind of our subject matter expert on the scholarship committee and its existence and where we should go with it.
But she, you said she has some recommendations, but that's not in here, right?
It's in the memo.
Which memo?
I.
In the packet?
It's in the packet, yeah.
Oh, maybe I had that.
The memo doesn't recommend. See, there's no memory.
Today's packet.
There's a.
Today's packet.
The memo doesn't recommend it, just.
Yeah, it just outlines all the different funds.
Funds, yeah.
And how they're, you know, what, what the language is for how they're to be used in the amounts.
So.
Hold on a second.
Hold on.
It might have gone out today.
She has something.
She just listed a few funds and there's only some of the funds.
Well, this is in the new packet, right, that we got this afternoon.
Twenty funds, I can see most of them.
She says memo.
Formally vote to dissolve the current scholarship advice, she's, the list of.
Where is that?
In the, in the memo she sent.
What page are you?
It's page sixty-eight of the PDF, but it's the PDF that came out at three o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah, I thought that's what I was looking at. Jinx.
Version control.
So the bullet point's there.
Yeah.
So.
I see, yeah, yeah, we do have it, you have it.
Okay.
Can you put it, Brian, do you have it on screen? Can you put it on screen? Page sixty-eight, you said?
Of the, yeah, P, single.
Okay.
Vote to dissolve the current.
Yeah, that would be great to put it up because somehow or other I didn't see this.
Vote to dissolve.
I think, yeah, it, yeah, okay. I think it was in the packet, but not in the, the folder, you know what I mean?
No, it's here, it's in the packet.
No, but I, I don't think it was, it wasn't in the folder.
Oh, in the OneDrive?
In the OneDrive.
Yeah, that's how I was looking, okay. So, should formally dissolve the current scholarship advise, so there is a, it does not have members and any recent history of the committee has not been complying with open meeting law, it is better to formally dissolve and begin anew. So, the motion is dissolve the scholarship advisory committee.
So we can do that tonight?
We can do that. And then, the second point is the board may consider consolidating or dissolving the smaller accounts. There is a legal process with the attorney general to complete this and council would assist. And the board may consider working with the school committee to adjust the rules of the Robbins Fund. So there's, I think the immediate action item is to dissolve the scholarship committee. Um, and then I think the other two, um, I think Christine, if you want to start digging into it a little bit and then we can schedule, once you've maybe talked to Gretchen and then.
Yeah.
You can educate us with, with some recommendations about, I mean, consolidating sounds like it makes a lot of sense.
Right, and some of these are pretty small.
Yeah, see what council suggested on protecting personal.
The third one would be working, I think, so let's, let's dissolve tonight and then let's, let's take the other recommendations under consideration.
Okay, and there's more, I mean, just beyond the bullet there about, you know, the idea of, and I don't think we have to take it up tonight, but just so that you're aware, to avoid discussing personal, financial and other protected information.
Right.
Yeah, this is very helpful.
I thought it was really, she did a nice job.
Yeah.
She's a star, so the.
Well, and Christine, you had said you had, with your involvement with the Gleason, you had done some work in this area.
We, we had a couple of.
We're, we're going to ask Christine to do some research on that.
She's also done some of these.
She, Gretchen or she?
No.
Yeah.
Good, all right, we have a volunteer.
One of the problems with the scholarship committee as it existed was this question of, of many of the members, this is just very anecdotal, but many, many of the members liked being on the committee, but they didn't like the idea of meeting in open about the scholarship and all those things, which I'm sure sounds familiar with many of the boards. But in particular, this one is tricky because of the financial aid aspects and the need aspects. So the, the question really that you should, that you should ponder and try to settle reasonably quickly is, do you want to continue the scholarship idea? And if so, how can you delegate it in a way that, that meets your intent without having to, which is that last paragraph, without having to have an open meeting? It's, the second piece in here that, that really needs a policy thought is, the funds that are being used are really for financial need as well. So how does that tie into the COHS, especially the HS part?
Right.
And how do you want to set these funds up in order to address multiple things? So, if it's a scholarship in perpetuity, then that's one route, if it's helping people in need.
But some go back to their charter, right? You can't just undo their charter.
But the Carolyn Hill, which was the primary scholarship fund, is, is not a scholarship fund, it's a need fund.
So, can, Ryan, can you, for example, TA-driven working group, that advisory group that doesn't, subject itself to OML? To administer these grants and?
So that's what it says, so council recommends a member of staff.
At the bottom down here, yeah.
The one person, right?
That's a big discussion though.
That staff screens based on your parameters and then presents final options to, but.
So, can we tonight dissolve the SAC and then nominate Christine to dive into those issues with?
Well, she's already.
Well, she's a liaison.
A liaison.
She's a liaison to a committee we just dissolved.
Well, no. Well, I'm going to stand up a new committee.
Yeah.
Oh, you're going to run the committee route?
Well, okay, so I'm going to.
I didn't think that was decided yet.
No, no, she's going to lead the effort, right, like.
Yeah, lead the effort is not liaison, lead the effort is research.
Yeah.
All this stuff and come up with your recommendations.
I'm kind of up with the framework, it's the way that Scott described it to me.
Yeah.
So that, this committee that I draft will not be a replacement to the scholarship committee, it will just be the framers of how this thing should operate. Do I have that right, Scott?
Yeah, you want to, you want to work to recommend the process and the policies and how you want to.
I'm hearing two different things, so I just want to be clear. I don't think you should stand up a committee yet, you should do what Scott said, you should come up with a process, a framework that may or may not, a recommendation in that may or may not be to stand up a new committee.
Because I don't want to do that unilaterally.
No, no, you're not doing anything unilaterally, you're going to come back with a set of recommendations.
And we would just, based on your research, because one of these recommendations is that we just give it to the town administrator ultimately for, you know, a policy implementation and, and maybe that is the best course. But it may be better to say, oh, we prefer to have it in a public, a, a committee and, you know, have it, but.
That's part of the.
But we need a person to spearhead that, that research.
So do you accept? Yeah, we're sorry.
I still don't have, I don't.
If you choose to.
I know. I just, I have a list of scholarship funds. Am I missing something?
Packet email that you got?
From this afternoon.
There's a link to the packet, not the OneDrive.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, it's.
That's why I missed it too, so.
So.
Sticking around.
I think, yeah, so Christine can spearhead it, because this, this needs, this needs attention from the SAC board, working with, is Gretchen the, who, who's, who on the town side is the best starting point?
She'll be staffing this, um, when needed, so you can, you can go to Gretchen's prior reported contact, but the financial stuff will have to be a combination of Sandy and, and town council.
Right, okay.
And school committee, you have to reach out to them, don't they control one of, at least one of the funds?
Yeah, so. And then it presumably comes back here and then we go out to school committee and get their buy-in and everyone else?
Well, she can do some outreach now. I think come back with recommendations and, yeah.
Okay.
Again, maybe standing up a committee, maybe delegating. Great, so can we move to dissolve the SAC today?
Let's do that.
I move to dissolve the SAC.
I second that.
The SAC.
The scholarship advisory committee.
All right, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And we don't need a vote to empower Christine to go.
Go forth and conquer.
Go forth and conquer, all right, let's do TA report.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, TA report, let's go.
Let's go, let's go.
Just a simple, hurry up. This is the last agenda item besides community.
I want you to know that Barney wanted me to make this longer, so.
We're ahead of schedule slightly.
Here is my well-received town administrator report. So, in, under town events and town hall news, just calling attention to the municipal newsletter that goes out monthly, this does have a, a strong readership. We do want to encourage boards and committees and through our liaisons, boards and committees to submit more information to this. The, the general idea besides informing the public is for boards and committees to inform each other. So this is a stand-in for what we call our all-boards meetings, so that boards and committees can be more familiar with other people, what other people are doing and then that encourages collaboration. We did start our new town hall public hours effective on July first. The town hall hours are now Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty A M. to four-thirty P M. They used to be nine to three, then Friday's a shorter day, nine A M. to twelve P M. We have processed all of the, there wasn't many employee requests for alternate hours and none of them conflict with keeping departments open. So, we do have small departments, in many cases it's one or two people, so there will never be a time where we can fully say everything is open, but we have a, a pretty good plan to have consistency across departments.
So everyone is, um, following the process, that if they're, they want their, if their hours, they want them changed, from what we're saying is the town hall hours, that they've come to you with that change, otherwise.
And had them approved, yes.
Yeah.
It's very few people, we did expect in any organization when you implement a change, so the problem was there wasn't a standard hours for employees, there was definitely a standard hours for the town hall operation, so there was a patchwork of, of hours. So to standardize all of these hours without smashing morale or, or losing employees, et cetera, we had to create a slow process. So, we're doing, we're doing it slow, we're honoring prior agreements that, that still have accountability and moving people towards standard hours, especially new hires. So when a new hire comes in, they're told this is the schedule and, um, they would have to be negotiated prior to the hire that they would be in an alternate schedule.
Okay.
For department updates, we talked a lot tonight about the fall town meeting, you are tracking the four big discussions, which are MBTA communities, the demolition delay bylaw, the, the wetland bylaw and the fire station. Continuing to ask you, it's one thing to talk about the logistics, but at some point you will have to dig into the details of these issues. So, in terms of your own process, understanding what you need for the information about each, whether it's written information or presentations in person or discussions, is, is really important because of that compressed timeline. So, you know this, but I'm, I'm trying to get you to not forget that you need to actually advise on these as well, not just run the process. So, what do you need? For road maintenance, we, the next round of road maintenance, which includes Pheasant Hill for sure, and then alternately possibly Acton Street and Berry Corner Road and Lane is out to bid. We have a strong interest, at least four of our traditional paving companies that are all great have come to the, the pre-bid process. These will be open on July fifteenth and we will, we'll be able to present you a picture of what paving can be done while maintaining funding for the future. Additionally, we are reserving money for the Complete Streets and Shared Streets Design Initiative, assuming that we did get the Complete Streets grant, which we don't know yet. And then started, as you heard tonight, structural analysis of the Westford Street culvert, praying that the temporary fix is now the permanent fix. Um, I am not an engineer and I know nothing, but it looks great, so I'm hoping that holds. We, uh, lastly, we are tentatively penciling in a road maintenance hearing for August twenty-second, we are directing people who have road issues to.
Twenty-second or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, sorry, August twenty-sixth, I'll make that change. At your regularly scheduled meeting, this will give residents an opportunity to voice their concerns and I will note that I was going to be gone on the twelfth and I recommended that it be on this date so I could be here with you while people complain about their roads. I'm with you, thank you. Some contract approvals that you'll definitely care about, but that are in, within the budget. The wheel brader contract, North Andover Inc. is our partner for waste delivery, this is our DPW, brings trash from our transfer station to this facility. Uh, we signed a new five-year contract with them, we've had a good relationship and there are surprisingly not a lot of people who do this. But we were able to keep the current year under three and a half percent, which is less than what we budgeted for with a five, a four percent annual increase, which we did comps and is industry standard. They also agreed to pay us five thousand dollars per year as a community benefit, which offset some of that increase and allows us to pay for something like hazardous waste day. This was all done with the T SAC and, um, Jim Hall, so we, we feel good about this new contract and continuing a very strong relationship. We also finalized the new annual agreement with the LRTA and I would call out that Jeff did a great job negotiating new capital, making sure that we had good, strong buses to work with, he advocated for the community. The primary thing we get out of LRTA is these capital investments, so we get the buses as part of this. We used to pay into the MBTA fee and get almost nothing out of that. I don't want to bring up MBTA as an issue, just saying we didn't have that, that access. Uh, the LRTA is a much better deal for us and I'm working with Jeff to make sure that we're covering all of our transportation costs and aligning them with budget goals. You heard a lot about culverts tonight, so I'm not going to go over culverts again, except to note that it needs to be part of the long-term capital plan, which, which you stated tonight. The elevator modernization project is still awaiting decision from the attorney general's office, that could come any minute and I'll make sure to update you when it does. The best-case scenario for us is that we continue what we've already lined up, which is our work with our winning vendor, worst case is we have to rebid the project. I will be finalizing the bid package for the brick building HVAC system upgrade. This will go out this week and should return in August for probably a September or October install. And lastly, as you know, there was a major leak in the, the bathrooms here in town hall, so that required us to redo the scope of work, we're finalizing that and then we'll put that back out to bid for the, for the MFC to run. CPA projects, some updates, we've put the Banta Davis Track rehabilitation out to bid. This is mostly a paving contract and we've had a lot of interest in this as well. Those responses are due by July twenty-fifth and we have contracted with NICH to begin assessing the septic capacity at the boghouse land. This would inform the board on, on how much land you would need in order to do a septic system and whether or not it's feasible to do affordable housing projects, so you'll get a lot of information out of this. This is funded through the administration fund of the CPC, using CPA funds and that should be done within the next month or two. Um, and this will come directly to you for a discussion about the boghouse. Building construction projects, um, the design continues for the library, not much information beyond that, they are planning to meet next week, so we should see an update on the design then. Police station renovation is starting to really move, we had our first coordination and kickoff meeting with APC, the project's contractor. They are finalizing all of the last documentation with CMS before they get an official notice to proceed and then construction will begin in September. It looks like full construction will conclude by early next summer with the bulk of it happening in the spring. The police station will remain open throughout most of the construction period. Um, we do need to reach out to, uh, the owner of Fern's and talk to Center Park about parking and, and other ways to alleviate some costs there. One savings we were able to have is the, both the OPM and the contractor did not require a trailer, so we're going to see some savings there, as long as we can be agreeable with things like parking. And lastly, you, you heard about the DPW building, so this is now pending, uh, direction from you, where you want to go with, with what you learned. Some upcoming discussion topics, I still would like to get MCRS in front of you when you have time, just so you understand the long-term assessment costs as it does relate to tax, tax and affordability in the next ten years or so because of the, um, liability that they're funding.
Remind me who MCRS is?
The Middlesex County Retirement System.
Got it.
This is a copy and paste error, but another discussion point would be Tecton coming in front of you, uh, I believe at your August twelfth meeting in order to discuss design.
Yep.
Probably more about that during liaison reports. The road maintenance hearing we talked about and that is correct there, August twenty-sixth. And then, at some point you have to evaluate me again, just reminding you it's that time of year, you're all pumped, I can tell. Two sign approvals for you, the Congressional Church is advertising their block party from August twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth and the Savoyard Light Opera Company is advertising their fall show with a banner and a rotary sign request.
And just quick clarification, so the, um, Congregational Church Block Party, it's August twenty-fourth to August twenty-sixth, not September. It's not a month's worth, or is it a month's worth of publicity?
That's what they requested and I will check.
You don't do a month.
Typically, yeah.
Even those wild congregationalists don't play.
Party for a month.
Party for a month.
Play for a month.
Yeah, that's fun.
Yeah, I think that, that's correct.
It's probably two weeks, but I will make sure.
It's in the, in the application, but if something.
All right.
Let's see.
Let's keep going.
Keep rolling.
Okay, staff recognition, so if you, if you have not heard yet, Alana Lynch, our assistant town clerk, has put in her resignation. So I'd like to thank Alana Lynch for her dedicated service as our assistant town clerk. She submitted a resignation, she'll be leaving at the end of the month, but we're thrilled to. but we were thrilled to share that she accepted an opportunity as a video game production producer, which I think is a pretty cool job. We knew when we hired her, that's what her dream was. She was one who was good at municipal government, but that was never her long-term goal. So we were able to get as much out of Alana as we, we could and this is an opportunity that if she didn't take it, I think we'd be mad at her. So although she initially sought just part-time work here, she was quickly placed into a very challenging situation when our town clerk, sadly Peggy Wang, passed away. So Alana played a crucial role during this transition, going above her job description to support one of the most demanding election seasons in recent memory. She assisted the onboarding of two interim town clerks and three, if you include Gretchen, when she was the temporary town clerk, and then helped welcome Ashley. So she had four bosses in, in two years. It wouldn't be an overstatement, or five, I should say. It wouldn't be an overstatement to say that Alana helped the town function smoothly during one of its, its toughest periods in terms of staff support. In addition to her primary duties, she worked extra hours assisting the Historical Commission with their complex administrative work and she makes the best millionaire shortbread, which I didn't know what it was. She brought it in today and we're definitely going to miss that. So we wish her the best as she pursues her dreams.
And she does have two N's, by the way. It's A-L-A-M-N.
Yes, which I fixed in the public document.
And the, and so her, it's the end of the month, you said, right?
Uh, this, yeah.
Yeah, and so are we starting the process then to find a replacement?
Yep, this is a consultation appointment. So we're discussing it with the Historical Commission. We are recommending that this position be rolled into the Assistant Town Clerk position and become, the Historical Commission one gets rolled into the Assistant Town Clerk for a full-time position. Right now it's 25 hours, which is still benefits eligible. And then Alana does part-time with the Historical Commission, so making that one job. We'd also add the duties of on-call or necessary board support, mostly minutes and catching people up on minutes to this job description as well to make it more robust. And that's part of our shared assistant strategy. But you're learning about this at the same time the Historical Commission is, so we're hoping they support that and then we can advertise this at the end of the week.
Okay.
And I've got some dates for you. The thing I just want to remind everyone is I'm going to be gone for two weeks. I'll be appointing Aubrey as the Acting Town Administrator while I'm at Fort Drum. And I was told there is some cell reception up there, so I might call some of you.
There is. I was just up there. That's the area.
I'll FaceTime you for the artillery fire. So I won't be able to hear you when I get back, but I'll be excited to be back.
Right.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. I don't think we need to do liaison reports.
But did you want to give an update on the...
No, we'll be meeting, at the next meeting...
The fire station?
We'll be talking to the select board and I'll include the dates for that.